How are you?
Good.
So I just wanted to get your opinion on a couple of items such as the antenna tower that is still there by Santa Monica College. I want to know what you all think of that. And I knew, I know it's supposed to be coming back to the planning commission sometime, but the county is stalling or something. So I want to know your opinion on this. There's also telecommunications towers in general are not getting the proper fire code or fire code following the fire codes when they're being apparently applied for. So that I want to know what's happening with that. With regards to the whole conflict of interest thing, I just want to know when you vote to approve a project for someone who you work with regularly, such as say, for instance, Doug Burge. Do you, Dennis and Skylar, do you think that you should be recusing yourselves on these items like such as the Malibu Motel because you could get work with him again over and over because you have worked with him before? And I know Jeff Jennings actually employed employs Doug Burge. So I don't know why he was not recused on the Malibu Motel as well. So I don't actually have any problem with Mr. Burge. He actually did a little bedroom design for us, but we never did it because it'll probably take over who knows how many years because my deck is still not approved. It's been almost three years. And I guess, Mr. Leonard, I can imagine that you will have a lot of architect and real estate contacts that you will, that will come to the commission sooner or later. So this is just a reminder that we as residents are all watching, especially as we come into a new election, this, this new election year. And then as John Maza was passed over again, I just wanted to also remind you that Steve Euring at the last city council meeting basically said to the majority planning commissioners to grow up. And he's the longest running planning commissioner on this, on this commission. So he should be respected. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any raised hands in Zoom?
No, there's no raised hands.
Okay, in that case, we are on to staff comments or no commissioner comments or no commissioner comments first. Dennis, want to start?
For once, I have nothing.
Why don't we go down the row?
I have zero comment.
Well, you look ready to go. Go ahead, Drew.
I wanted to make this meeting in the memory of Line Hran and wanted to send our condolences to his family.
I got support for that.
Yeah, I would second that. Let's make a note of that to remember that, please. John?
And Richard, correct me if I'm wrong in this. I understand the tower next to the college is been illegally constructed and they have to come in and get a CDP to correct that before it's open. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
The, the building permits for that were issued by the state of California, not by the city. So unfortunately, we don't have much leverage when it comes to the building permits. We have notified them of the issues, but the planning department, which represents the city's interests, we are not issuing a final approval on the project until, yes, the tower is addressed. We had a meeting with the county and they will be submitting an amendment to address the height of the tower to be reviewed by this commission.
So I don't quite understand. So we, we don't get to issue the permit, but they have to come to us once they issue it?
These, because of the city's local coastal program, we have a planning sphere of influence. But when it comes to actual construction permits and engineering plan checks, that falls under the state architect's office and they, they're the ones who issue the actual construction permits and the, it's not a C of O, it's a cert, it's basically the, the certification for occupancy of the building. I forget what they call it. Maybe it's a certification of completion, but that's issued by the state.
So you can occupy a building that we haven't approved or use a tower we haven't approved?
So the tower is not in use. There are no antennas on the tower. There is a lightning arrestor. That's the white vertical whip that's on top of the antenna. That is not on top of the tower. So they have not installed any of those items and they are aware that they do not have an approval from the city as indicating that they have met all their conditions of approval for the coastal development permit that was issued.
So my question is they're occupying the building and advertising its use and using it. So could they go on forever and we never approve the building?
I'm sure at some point there would be some sort of stop. The occupancy is not like our certificate of occupancy where you get a C of O. Their certificate for occupancy has three stages to it. And once you have started the process of going through their punch list, apparently the state allows you to occupy a building. And so as far as I know, they are only in, I think, stage one, maybe two of three. So they are still working with the state.
And one last question on that. So
Last question.
Okay, I have other questions on the other thing she said, but so if we always review cellphone towers that are over 28 feet, cellphone poles, I guess. So the federal government doesn't have as much leeway. We have more leeway with the federal government than with the state government. That was
The telephone poles are from providers.
Yeah, but they're FCCs. The reason we get to review them is because they're over 28 feet because it's in RLIP. But that's different than, than the state?
So I'm, this tower, we're reviewing it for the structure. I'm sorry, a bit confused by the question, but we are reviewing this as an, a communications facility. The county is aware that as part of their amendment to address the height, they are going to also have to obtain a use permit. The county at this time is stating that that tower is for county communications. The permits that they're filing for are for county communications, not for wireless communications. They have explained to us they have not allowed any wireless carriers to apply for the tower, to use that tower since they own it. So I hope I'm answering your question on that, but as I mentioned, it's, it's
design for us, but we never did it, because it'll probably take over who knows how many years, because my deck is still not approved. It's been almost three years. And I guess, Mr. Leonard, I can imagine that you will have a lot of architect and real estate contacts that you will, that will come to the commission sooner or later. So this is just a reminder that we, as residents, are all watching, especially as we come into a new election, this, this new election year. And then, as John Mazza was passed over again, I just wanted to also remind you that Steve Urring, at the last city council meeting, basically said to the majority planning commissioners, "To grow up," and he's the longest-running planning commissioner on this, on this commission, so he should be respected. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any raised hands in Zoom?
No, there's no raised hands.
Okay, in that case, we are on to staff comments, or no, commissioner comments, or no, commissioner comments first. Dennis, wanna start?
For once, I have nothing.
Why don't we go down the row?
I have zero comment.
Well, you look ready to go. Go ahead, Drew.
I wanted to make this meeting in the memory of Line Hran, and wanted to send our condolences to his family.
I got support for that.
Yeah, I would second that. Let's make a note of that, to remember that, please. John?
And Richard, correct me if I'm wrong in this. I understand the tower next to the college has been illegally constructed, and they have to come in and get a CDP to correct that before it's open. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
The, the building permits for that were issued by the state of California, not by the city, so unfortunately, we don't have much leverage when it comes to the building permits. We have notified them of the issues, but the planning department, which represents the city's interests, we are not issuing a final approval on the project until, yes, the tower is addressed. We had a meeting with the county, and they will be submitting an amendment to address the height of the tower to be reviewed by this commission.
So I don't quite understand. So we, we don't get to issue the permit, but they have to come to us once they issue it?
These, because of the city's local coastal program, we have a planning sphere of influence, but when it comes to actual construction permits and engineering plan checks, that falls under the state architect's office, and they, they're the ones who issue the actual construction permits, and the, it's not a C of O, it's a cert, it's basically the, the certification for occupancy of the building. I forget what they call it. Maybe it's a certification of completion, but that's issued by the state.
So you can occupy a building that we haven't approved? Or use a tower we haven't approved?
So the tower is not in use. There are no antennas on the tower. There is a lightning arrestor, that's the white vertical whip that's on top of the antenna, that is not on top of the tower. So they have not installed any of those items, and they are aware that they do not have an approval from the city, as indicating that they have met all their conditions of approval for the coastal development permit that was issued.
So my question is, they're occupying the building and advertising its use and using it, so could they go on forever and we never approve the building?
I'm sure at some point, there would be some sort of stop. The occupancy is not like our certificate of occupancy, where you get a C of O. Their certificate for occupancy has three stages to it, and once you have started the process of going through their punch list, apparently the state allows you to occupy a building. And so, as far as I know, they are only in, I think, stage one, maybe two of three. So they are still working with the state.
And one last question on that.
Last question.
Okay, I have other questions on the other thing she said, but. So if, we always review cellphone towers that are over 28 feet, cellphone poles, I guess. So the federal government doesn't have as much leeway. We have more leeway with the federal government than with the state government. In other words. Yeah, but they're FCCs. The reason we get to review them is because they're over 28 feet, because it's in RLIPE, but that's different than, than the state?
So I'm, this tower, we're reviewing it for the structure. I'm sorry, a bit confused by the question, but we are reviewing this as an, a communications facility. The county is aware that as part of their amendment to address the height, they are gonna also have to obtain a use permit. The county, at this time, is stating that that tower is for county communications. The permits that they're filing for are for county communications, not for wireless communications. They have explained to us, they have not allowed any wireless carriers to apply for the tower, to use that tower, since they own it. So I hope I'm answering your question on that, but as I mentioned, it's, it's a new tower in a structure, so that's why we're reviewing it.
Let me just say, we're getting into the weeds on this. Maybe the most pertinent question is, this is coming before us, right? And do you have any sense of how soon?
And I'm sorry, I don't. We had a meeting a couple weeks ago with the county supervisor's office, where they asked me what was required to submit the amendment, and they agreed to submit the amendment, because I know we had been debating that for a while with them, and they are on board now with submitting it. They understand the reasons, so I would expect that we'll be getting it shortly. We do reach out to them on a regular basis.
Okay. John, do you have a need to put an agenda item on to talk about this at another meeting?
No, I wanna ask the next question. Well, the way you explain it, I understand that they can't turn it on until we approve it. Is that right?
They are not to install any antennas until you approve it.
And then if they do install a, say, a Verizon antenna, then they'd be in violation?
That's correct, because their application, as they've indicated, is for county communications only.
Okay, and then my next question on a different subject is, I don't understand quite what the issue is on the cell towers and electrical being within electrical code. Maybe Skylar can answer that, but.
I didn't hear any question in there at all. All I heard was that there was some concern over it. I don't understand what the validity of anything that was asked is.
Do you know, Richard, or is this a mystery to you?
My understanding, Tyler, what's the name of the report? Let me get the senior planner up here to give you the exact name. My understanding is that there were a few applications that were submitted to plan check that did not have, and Tyler could fill you in on the proper term of the report, the electrical engineering was presented in a different manner than the report submit, and I'll let Tyler take over from there. He can name the report.
Yeah, sure. There, so the code requires a few engineering documents, one being the, I think it's called a short circuit coordination study, and it's, it's a long process. I believe the, the city manager's gonna release a statement about it, so I don't wanna say too much, but, but yes, we're addressing it.
Thank you.
Okay. If no one has other comments, I have one. It's been a matter of some public confusion, and recently I heard someone opine again that the city's general plan is basically aspirational, that, for example, we can't treat the vision and mission statements as law, because the actual laws are implemented in more specific code, like the municipal code. Three points on that. One, it is the law. It's analogous to our constitution, and so any interpretation we might make that goes against it would be illegal. Two, our former planning director, Bonnie Blue, suggested several times that we, the commission, should be citing to the general plan more often, because it can provide support for findings where a concern might otherwise seem amorphous, such as, quote, "protecting the privacy of residents." So language in it can be cited. And third, lest there be any doubt, the general plan is incorporated into the municipal code. So as a decision-making body, we're required not only to preserve rural character, but also to be committed to sacrifice urban and suburban conveniences in order to protect the environment, and to preserve unaltered natural resources in rural characteristics, et cetera, and rural characteristics. So I just wanted to put that out there, that if there's any confusion on that, it'll probably continue, but that's how I see it. So I think we're now on to staff comment.
Thank you very much, Chair. Okay, our presentation up here. Just once again, a reminder that Thursday will be the last day for the majority of us here at City Hall until next year. There will be limited services next week. There'll be code enforcement, building safety inspections taking place, our fire rebuild contract planner, as well as the other city contract planners will be working. Services will be via email and by phone. As far as I know, the doors to City Hall will be locked. General city staff will not be in the building. The planning and building and safety online portals will be closed as well, as well as the public counters. There will not be any processing of payments. And also, the, when we say hotlines and emails here, these are the general question hotlines and emails. Building inspector hotline will still be checked, as well as the code enforcement hotline. That will be checked. Next slide, please. Thank you. For a reminder for everybody, construction is not prohibited on city holidays, which would be Christmas and New Year's Day, but other than that, construction can go on. And we have been spreading the news of this through the city's e-blasts. We have also gone through the database to look for information on owners and occupants, or, excuse me, applicants and owners, and sent them notification of this, and we've also been doing posts on the social media website for the city. And then my last update, just to give an update to the planning commission, last week, the coastal commission heard the application that was approved by this body for 6244 Bush Drive. That was the application for a new wastewater treatment system and the conversion of existing space into an ADU, or second unit, I should say, working on the ADU ordinance. I'll get to that next. The, the application, there was an appeal filed at the coastal commission. You may remember this, too. There is a stream that runs through the property, so there was a variance included in the application, because the applicant was unable to meet the 100-foot requirement for setback for the wastewater treatment system. The planning commission, or city coastal commission, found no substantial issue with it at their December hearing, and the approval granted by this body stands. I am also in that, sorry, going through my notes here. The last thing I was going to say, and it now slipped my mind, because I almost blurred it with this one, which, I'll be honest, because I'm too focused on presenting Adrian's item tonight, I have completely forgot it, so I'll just save it for the next one.
Okay, thank you, Richard. John, yeah?
It was my understanding, at the last meeting, you were going to have instructions on how to appeal, and the appeal dates, along with the staff reports, and I don't see anything. Is that not, yes, Rebecca.
Yes, I'll let Rebecca answer that one. We are prepared for that this evening.
Just, I'm going to read into the record, language that is being added to any resolution that has a decision this evening, and the only section of the appeal language that will change is the section titled Local Appeal. In summary, we're extending that appeal period to January 8, 2024, at 5:30 PM, for any decision that is made, a resolution decided one way or another this evening. To read it formally into the record pursuant to LIP Section 13.20.1, Local Appeals, a planning commission decision may be appealed to the city council by an aggrieved person by written statement setting forth the grounds for appeal. An appeal shall be filed with a city clerk within 10 days, and shall be accompanied by an appeal form and a filing fee of $750. Please note that the city council adopted Resolution Number 23-051, approving a one-time City Hall closure from December 22, 2023, through January 1, 2024. As such, the appeal period for this decision will be told until City Hall reopens. For every day that City Hall is closed during the appeal period, an additional day will be added to the appeal period, to ensure that members of the public are afforded the ability to obtain information before filing an appeal. The appeal period for the decision is from December 19, 2023, through January 8, 2024, 5:30 PM. Appeal forms may be found online at www.malibuocity.org/planingforms. For questions about the appeal process, please contact the planning department at 310-456-2489, extension 246.
The goal of what we did was essentially, was to toll the appeal period while City Hall was closed, so that, in effect, there, there is no effect. The, the appellant, if someone is interested in filing an appeal, has the same amount of open City Hall days as if we were closed. And what I forgot to mention was, the AD ordinance was adopted at first reading by the city council at their last meeting on Monday, and they'll be, after the new year, we'll bring it back for a second reading, and then the ordinance, the municipal code ordinance will go up to HCD for their review, and the LCPA will be submitted to the coastal commission for their review and consideration, and then it will, we'll find out if they have modifications or just what. We'll be bringing it back to council.
I have a question, Patrick. It was my understanding the city always uses calendar days instead of business days. So this is a change, now eliminating calendar days from the appeal period, actually adding calendar.
Correct. So I, I wouldn't categorize it as that. I would categorize it as a very unique, one-off situation, and Rebecca, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe this is the first time in decades that the city has formally closed for the Christmas period. Thus, in full fairness and equity for everyone, this is the appeal period for this narrow set of decisions that may or may not be made tonight.
So it's being treated as an exception?
A total exception. This has no bearing on future use of calendar days versus business days. This is a one-off, unique exception due to the unprecedented closure of City Hall, and in a way that we don't wanna jam anyone up or make it seem unfair, that they couldn't come and appeal. That is what we are doing.
I totally agree with what you said. I'm just wondering, was this, was this changed in the LIP, or does the city council do this, and can it be challenged in court, because they did or did not do it?
So, you know, we're kinda getting into the weeds here. I cannot comment on what someone may or may not challenge in court. All I can say is that this approach, from our office's opinion, provides the most equity, fairness, and transparency for all involved, and that is what we strive to do.
But it was made, decision was made by, what I'm concerned about is, somebody turns one in on the 8th, and some attorney who's, you know, doing his job, could come in and say, "Who authorized that, and was it legal?"
And, and so we will, we would point that attorney to this meeting. We would rely upon all of those facts that I just posited, and once again, point them to the idea behind fairness, equity, and transparency, and making a decision on these projects that are before you, and potentially the City Hall, on the merits, and not on procedural gotchas, or, you know, things like that. So I cannot guarantee you that someone may not challenge it. However, the other side of that coin, I don't need to go down that route of saying, "Hey, come and appeal something when City Hall is not open."
So if you really wanna be safe, you'd appeal it tomorrow morning?
John, I think, I mean, you asked a reasonable question, and, and we have a good, good answer on the record, so that's a bridge to cross if anybody ever comes to it.
That's your opinion. I know attorneys.
Well, and, and they'll cross that bridge if they have to.
It's just amazing, it's just amazing that a planning commissioner, the only thing that he is worried about is an appeal. You're a planning commissioner, and the only thing you've talked about for the last three meetings is, "How are you gonna appeal?" Boy, how obvious is that?
Okay, we're getting into, we're getting into ad hominem territory here. It's worth pointing out, but beyond that, we don't need to have a personal thing here.
No, I'm not gonna have a personal thing. I just wanna read our next item to approve.
Hang on, hang on.
And it is that you should censure him for saying that.
We, we, okay.
I can give you the citing right here.
John?
Okay?
John, we'll get to that item in a moment. Richard, are we done with commission, staff comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, Rebecca?
I apologize. I have one quick thing. Two planning commission meetings ago, a tablet was left in council chambers, and I've reached out to those that I thought might have left it behind. Nobody has claimed it. If somebody believes that they left a tablet here and can identify, like, what type of cover, what type of tablet, I would love to return it to somebody. If I can't identify who owns it by tomorrow, we're going to move it over to the city safe, in hopes that somebody will claim it at some point.
If it's made by Apple, it's mine.
It is not.
No, okay, I'm kidding. All right, so we're moving on to the consent calendar. John will have an opportunity on 3A1 he wants to talk about. We have speaker slips on 3B2, or what is it? 3, 3B1, and then 3B2 is the approval of the minutes. Which, does anybody wanna pull that?
John, do you wanna pull the minutes?
No.
Okay, can I make a motion to approve consent minutes, and I guess we're gonna hear 3?
3B1 and, or 3A, 3A1 and 3B1?
Yep.
Okay, so 3A1. This was the.
May I have a second for Skylar's motion?
I'll certainly.
Thank you. And can I do a quick roll call?
Sure, please.
Sky, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete, I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So this is the planning commission rules of procedure and decorum. I have a comment on this, but John obviously has a comment, too. You guys have, you wanna? Okay. You want me to go ahead? Okay, fine. All right, in this last item, commission voted to strike Section 2.1.1.2, which stated, "No commissioner shall be elected as either chair or vice sheriff. He or she has served a chair in the four months immediately preceding the election." This, I think, goes against the spirit of our having short terms, so that we can rotate around. So let me just say, I looked at the meeting. We did a really weird thing with it on November 30th. Briefly, John didn't get the vote for chair, at which point Skylar said he'd be happy to do it again, but for the rule against successive terms, which we're talking about now, and Dennis said, "Well, let's change the rule." So we changed it so that Skylar could be chair again, but I had then observed that no one had mentioned me yet, and so we voted on me, and Dennis graciously cast the third vote for me. So we changed the rule on the spur of the moment, without any reason other than to keep Skylar here in the seat, no other intent, and then we never voted on him. So it was a strange moment, and I think we ignored the legislative history of why we switched to the five-month terms. When I made that proposal, part of the explicit reasoning was to promote sharing of the chair. Everybody would get their shot. We'd take turns, our turns would come around more often, and so hopefully we'd be more respectful of each other. So I, I think that vote was maybe a hasty misstep, and that I would move to reconfirm or reinstate whichever is appropriate, the rule, to uphold the values associated with sharing the chair, at least to the degree that it can't be monopolized continuously. I don't think the people of Malibu would wanna see that either, if anybody, including me, were just sitting here the whole time. So I would, I would like to make a motion to rescind, or reverse, or reinstate the original rule, whatever the legal means of doing that would be, and I would wanna second for that motion.
I'll second that.
John will second.
Do you wanna open up to public comment, Chair, before we get too much into that?
We could open that up to public comment. There, I did get no speaker slips, but do we have anybody on Zoom? Parker?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. All right, so what, what think, you guys?
So, John, you seconded that?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that if this commission wants somebody to serve, that that person should be able to serve whoever that person is, and I think that while, you know, if we continue to have meetings that are just wasting everybody's time, people are gonna be upset with whoever's running, being the chair or the vice chair, and we need to do our best job to get through these in an efficient manner. So whatever's gonna get us to that goal, I'm in favor of, and I'm in favor of not having the limit on the terms, if that's gonna get us there. That's where I stand.
Okay, John?
Well, the reason for the rule, as stated, when we got our first inkling of it was coming, was to let everybody have a chance to be on the commission, and to let every city councilman be represented as chair. And so we split it up, so everybody could be on the commission in a two-year period. Then, we came along and said, "Well, we'll let some guy be chairman forever." Essentially, that's what it says. You can be chairman as long as you're here, and you have a majority. So what's happened So what's happened in this town over the last 30 years, and everybody who's been here 30 years knows it, is it's gone from pro-development to slow growth to pro-development to slow growth. Which means that next time it changes, in November, one vote changes, one councilman changes, then what you're encouraging is, okay, slow-growth guys, you can never be chairman, or pro-growth guys, you can never be chairman, ever. And that's what will happen. And that's the exact opposite for the reason for having this, the exact opposite. And of course, Skyler, as you said the first hearing we had, well, I don't have to follow the rules anyway. So we've already had the rule violated about 10 minutes ago.
Right, because you're still sitting as vice chair. So then you'd be serving a consecutive term and that would be in violation of the rules. I just want to be clear on that.
It says chairman only.
I, no commissioner shall be elected as either chair or vice chair? If he serves as chair? Okay, I got it. Sorry, I misread it. But in any event.
We've already, what I, let me finish, please, because part of these rules are, you have to ask him to talk, okay? Everybody has to ask Craig to talk. That'll save a lot of time, okay? Now, so we're in a situation where within half an hour of the start of the meeting, we've already had a violation by one commissioner of the whole section three, okay? And now we have a situation where we're going to vote to say, okay, we can dominate the chairmanship as long as we have a majority on the city council. And the whole purpose for this was to do the opposite of that. So I know this will pass because you want to be chairman. And that's the way it's going to be. But what's going to happen is we're going to balkanize this commission even more. And there'll be no chance their pro-growth guy will be chairman. There'll be no growth, no chance that a, you know, a slow-growth guy will be chairman if the council is in that different direction. That's just what we're voting for.
Okay, gentlemen, what is the argument for the possibility of allowing somebody to go indefinitely?
I have a question.
Yeah.
If we could have a supermajority limiting the amount of time each one of us talks, maybe we could figure out a way to get beyond this. But the situation that we're operating under right now is just pretty much wasting a lot of people's time.
Let me get this in here, hang on to your comment, John, you guys.
John can go ahead and waste some more time.
Okay. That's illegal. You cannot, you cannot take an appointed official and say, you can't talk, period. You'll lose that case every single time. And I think Mr. Donigan would, would say so. But maybe you won't, but I would think he would say so.
John, I don't, I don't think that the, the point of what Drew's trying to make is not that he's trying to make an argument that he's going to lose. What we're looking at here is now it's 7:10 almost. We have yet to get through any bit of a substantial item. And we continue to do that on a level that is making meetings that should take one to two hours, take four hours. And if we want to go through the merits of everything and there's, there's a warrant, that's important. There's, I'm not taking anything away from that. But when we start to go off into tangents where it doesn't make sense, that frustrates me. I'd rather be home with my family. That frustrates other people that are up here for whatever else they have to do. And it keeps coming back to you. So that's what's really frustrating, okay? I would like to see you sit in the seat here as chair. I don't think that anyone doesn't want to see that, but they don't want to see that if we keep going down the road that we're going down. That's my point.
John?
Okay, the comment is, how do you waste time? You waste time when a certain commissioner, before we even start a hearing, say, we should approve this. And the chairman has to say, no, no, you got to have a hearing first, okay? We are here to do, and I can show you the tape of that. And we are here to do a review of what the staff gives us and give it full body. Because we have an extraordinary amount of appeals. You think we waste time here? How about it going from here to the city council, to the coastal commission, back to here, back to the city council, back to us, and then to the coastal commission again? How much staff time does that take? And that happens over and over again because of violating law.
No, John, hold on. The reason why that happens is because you instruct other people to appeal it. And then you fail, and you fail, and you fail. So all you're doing is wasting everybody's time, including the staff.
Guys, this is getting way too personal. There's a motion on the table. I would like to hear the argument for why it's a benefit to allow a chair to sit here indefinitely. Why, why isn't it a good thing to say, let's rotate it around?
I think that it's fine to rotate it around. If you, I just don't think that what is going, being conducive of any of this is having somebody that sits on the planning commission and being the chair of the planning commission, directing the audience how and when to file an appeal, and then complaining about how much time the appeals are taking when they're the one that's in charge of it. It just doesn't make any sense to me at all.
I think the time-wasting argument is, we're probably all guilty of it at some level. And so I don't think we need to, I don't know, I don't see where it gets us to argue about who's wasting the most time.
And I don't think it goes anywhere to accuse somebody of a crime when they can't prove it and they don't know it, and they're just making blabber.
Okay, enough of, enough of the personal stuff. Can we, I guess we need to have a vote on the motion so we can move ahead here.
And so I just want to be sure we all know what the motion is. It was to reinsert section 2 IB2, which states, I won't repeat it, and then renumber the subsequent subsections accordingly.
Thank you.
Assistant, the city attorney, Donigan, I could ask, could we simply just vote on not rescinding 2347? It would just keep 2347 standing?
As of right now, it exists. So I think the motion, it could go either way, but it would simply be to deny this. And it would be at the same result.
That's why I made it in the alternative, yeah. Yeah, so. So a yes vote says we keep the rule?
Correct, Chair Hill. So the motion on the floor, if adopted, the resolution before you tonight will not pass. And we will go back, not go back, but as adopted previously. And the, and the rule on no commissioner shall be elected as either chair or vice chair if he or she served as chair in the four months immediately preceding the election will be in place.
Okay, roll call, please.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
No.
Commissioner Peak?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Nope.
Motion fails.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to remove the language that we're talking about.
We already.
Do we need to do that or no?
It would just be, it would be adopt.
Just to adopt the consent comment?
Adopt, yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt 3A1.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Hill?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we are now on to 3, so I guess everybody wants me to stay in the chair forever. All right, 3B1. This is an extension of a CDP number 16-024, site plan review number 18-027, and demolition permit number 19-022, a request to extend planning commission's approval at 22271 Carbon Mesa Road. Do I need to read the whole description or was that sufficient?
That's sufficient, Chair.
Okay. Okay, so we have, this has been polled. We have a couple of members of the public who would like to talk about this first, right? Do we need, I guess we don't need a staff report, right? All right, so we've got Matt Jewitt and we've got Vidas Matare. Same, both, okay, all right. So we've got the, presumably the applicant, right? Okay. So do we have any Zoom calls on there?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, so with that, we can bring it back up to the table. Rebecca?
Mike?
I was just wondering if you'd like to take disclosures?
I was just going to say disclosures, gentlemen?
None.
None.
None. None.
None.
Okay, so, so 3, okay, John polled it. Why don't you lead off then?
Okay, I want to waste your time trying to follow the, the code and just, the conclusion to approve this is the project, the conditions in the zoning ordinance under which the approval was made have not sufficiently changed, blah, blah, blah. The rest is just boilerplate. Three lines above that, it says, fire code access, water pressure requirements changed, changed while the parcel was in plant check. Geological concerns in light of the updated fire code regulations were addressed, until they're addressed. And they're asking two years to do that. So we're, the conclusion is opposite to what the evidence is. It's not, in my mind, this is not a huge deal, but that's what the law says. So I just wanted to point that out.
So you're arguing for a one year or not a two year, or what do you?
I'm arguing that it's not eligible for a continuance because the conditions, as, as required, the codes have changed.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the effect of, maybe we could.
I have a, I have a question. So the way that I understand this, and maybe I'm wrong, is that the code and stuff changed. And in light of that, the applicant had to do some stuff to make sure that the project is compliant with that. Is that correct? So what's the issue?
That is correct.
Yeah.
The issue is, it's eligible for a, an extension if the codes have not changed.
Okay, the reason why they're asking for, Renika, the reason why they're asking for the extension is in order to comply with the codes that have changed, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so what's the problem?
The problem is that extensions are allowed unless the codes have changed. The word unless is a big word.
Where, John, where are you citing to here?
I'm citing.
I guess, John, would I not?
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
I'm citing the conclusion of why we should vote for it. I'm citing the conclusion of why we would vote for it. Quote, conclusion, the project conditions and zoning ordinance under which the approval was issued have not changed. Okay?
I think what that's talking about is the, the scope of the project and what would be allowed on the site, et cetera. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, repeat the question? I'm trying to follow.
What John's reading is in, in the conclusion, right? The first sentence, the project conditions and the zoning ordinance under which the approval was issued have not significantly changed.
So the zoning ordinance has not changed?
Yeah, exactly. So that's in reference to the zoning, which has not changed.
That's correct.
The applicant's merely asking for more time so that they can make their project compliant with the code that the fire department and others are requiring.
That's correct.
Okay, so I don't see any issue with this.
Can I tell you why I said that? Because a paragraph before that, it says, fire code access, check, let's see, fire code and water pressure requirements changed.
That has nothing to do with the zoning.
Yeah.
Zoning requires that you have fire and water. It's part of our, our conditions.
John, to what end on this?
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just telling you how the law is set up. You can violate the law, you do it all the time, but I'm just pointing it out.
Maybe, Patrick, you could, you could split the hair on the lawyer.
Once again, I defer to senior planner Brooks. I apologize if I, if I got your, your total wrong. The, the fire code, as Commissioner Peak said, is not synonymous with zoning ordinance used in the conclusion. Vice Chair Mazza is correct. Oftentimes, our zoning ordinance and our project conditions require compliance with a whole host of things. Building code, fire code, there's a plethora, I'm sure, people out in the, in the audience know more about it than I do. And so I do not read those as inconsistent. But once again, this, this item is before you all tonight. Those are totally fine from a legal perspective. And so the statement that it violates the law by passing this is, is not what I agree with. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a motion to approve item 3B1?
You may.
Or just receive and file, or?
It's a, it's an extension. They've been doing it forever. I second it.
We do need a vote, a time extension.
I second.
John, are you left hanging or is that, does that satisfy you?
It doesn't satisfy me. It's legal, but I know I'm going to lose, so I'm no fool.
All right, let's call the, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so now we are on to, what are we on to?
4A, Chair.
4A1. This is the, or 4A, Nobu RioCon Motel and Malibu Tidepool Health Club Project CDP permit, CDP number 23-046, LCP amendment number 16-001, general plan map amendment number 16-001, zoning map amendment number 15-001, CUP number 16-007, lot tie number 21-001, initial study number 17-002, and negative declaration number 19-002. This is at 22752 and 22762 Pacific Coast Highway, within the appealable zone. Let's take some disclosures first, shall we, gentlemen? Thank you. Dennis?
I met with these two fine gentlemen in the front row today, and I didn't learn anything that I didn't read in the staff report.
Was that since the last meeting or that was?
Today.
Today, okay. Skyler?
I have no other disclosures other than meeting with them prior to the, our last time we discussed this.
Okay, I got a call from a neighbor saying that there's already too much noise in the pool area and visual invasion of their privacy through their windows. I also looked up the AVCO Community Developers Decision that's cited in the, in applicant's footnote. And I submitted some written questions to Adrian. And if and where they become material to our deliberation, I will mention them. I don't think they go substantially beyond whatever's in the report.
Craig, can I ask you, what, what did the neighbor say about the noise?
So there's already too much noise coming from there and, and the visual invasion of privacy because their windows, their residential windows are right next to that pool deck.
So there's already too much noise coming from the pool area where nobody goes in the pool?
Well, apparently.
I just want to be clear about that. I just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
Not, not in the pool, but hanging out or partying or whatever might have, I don't know. He didn't, he wasn't specific.
Okay.
But people are out there.
So there, so no specifics, but there's too much noise coming from the pool area?
From, from people socializing in some manner, yeah. John?
I cannot remember his name, but I'm sure he's the same guy called me. He said he lived within five feet of the pool. That there was a lot of construction noise, a lot of daily noise that they have, apparently, and this is all coming from him, some kind of gym classes or something out there. And he expects when they open it up to full use, it's going to drive him nuts.
To clarify, I didn't have a conversation with him. He left me a long phone message, so that's, that's what I'm reporting.
Okay, and, but nobody remembers his name? So John had a conversation with somebody?
I could go through all the letters. It's a howl or something like that. It's in the letters. He wrote a letter.
So, John, to you, he was complaining about some classes that they were doing on the pool deck?
He was saying.
Or construction?
He was saying he was five feet from the pool deck. Five feet. And he was, they were, they, he and others in the building were bothered all the time by noise. Essentially, now, I don't know how big a noise, I don't know how many decibels. I'm telling you what disclosure.
Okay, so the residential homeowner that lives adjacent to a commercial property on the beach is complaining about the noise from the commercial property? Or the noise from the highway, or the noise from the waves, or what?
He's complaining about the tide pool gallery.
He's not complaining about the noise from Nobu or Soho House?
No.
Specifically from that place?
He said he lived five feet from it.
Okay.
And then I, did you, am I disclosing?
You're, you're disclosing.
Okay, and then I gave you all a copy of an appeal I made on the project in 2015. The comment, the sequences, the one page that you'll see called Reasons for Appeal is copied directly from the staff report. I filed it because of whatsoever said on the staff report. It was not recommended by the planning commission at that time. And then I got a call from the city saying that. And then I got a call from the city saying that, I got it right here, what did they say?
You got a call?
They had said, they had said a zone text amendment to change the zoning. That was in 2015. I met with the attorneys, different attorneys for Ellison, and we had an agreement that if they changed the zoning, there would be no problem. Unfortunately, that was never filed. I withdrew the appeal because it was irrelevant. I did not get final that had been pulled, but I pulled it, I didn't, but I didn't get any of the documents for them filing. Apparently, they filed a couple of years later, and it's been sitting there with no action for eight years. So, that's, so I just wanted to disclose that, that's the situation. Her name, their architect was named Severine Tangangelo or something, and their attorney was from a different firm. It was at Latham &amp; Watkins or something.
Okay, I'm going to, Patrick, tell us about the significance of this and how we can treat this or not treat, I don't...
So, the significance of it is up to you all. I'm just going to say that a copy is available to the public at the front table, should anyone be inclined.
Hello?
Copy. I gave you all a copy, too.
I thought you said there was coffee available.
Yeah. Okay, let's do this.
No coffee, a copy of the...
I formally requested that last week.
Yeah, actually, that would be good. If anybody's heading out to Starbucks, let me know. Drew, disclosure.
I've had, I have not had any communications with the applicant. I've driven by the project a couple of times and looked at it. I've read all the correspondences in regards to this application, and that's it.
Okay. In that case, may we have a little soft shoe dance from the planning, I mean, a staff report from Richard, please?
Soft shoe dance?
He's, he's filling in for Adrian, so he's, he's had to work overtime here.
So, I hope I'll be able to answer everything for you. I plan on it, and just to give you a quick recap of where we are, this was previously heard by the, this commission in November, and the subject application is to change the zoning and general plan land use designation to allow for the existing RioCon Motel and adjacent Tide Pool to conjuctively operate as a bed and breakfast inn. The applicant has requested the use of the bed and breakfast inn because it allows for the kitchen facilities to provide meals for the guests only. The Tide Pool building currently has a kitchen facility that is used to prepare assembled meals for the motel guests. The project also includes a new guest suite with kitchenette on the second floor of the Tide Pool building. This is a vicinity map and aerial photo, just to refresh everyone's mind of what we're talking about and where. Both parcels have been developed, they're both on the beach, beach side of Pacific Coast Highway, and other than the conversion mentioned earlier, there are no new improvements proposed with the project. The number of rooms from the previous CDP were 22, that's now going to be reduced to a total of 17. The applicant has chosen to pay the low, low-cost overnight accommodation in lieu fee, and the applicant is in agreement with the condition to be added to the resolution, which includes the requirement of the in lieu fee for the proposed guest suite. At the last Planning Commission hearing, the item was discussed, and then the item was continued due to some concerns raised by the commissioners. There were some questions about the history of the Tide Pool site since 2015. That was included in the, the current agenda report. There were some questions about the existing onsite wastewater treatment system, and as we mentioned, the applicant submitted an updated wastewater treatment report for the proposed use to demonstrate that the existing wastewater treatment system has ample capacity for the proposed use. The city's environmental health administrator has issued an updated referral sheet based on this most current report. There was also a question on whether or not the Water District approval was required. Staff did contact the Water District, explained the scope of the project, and the Water District explained that a review was not required. There was also a question about the history of the RioCon motel's ABC license. We found a letter from the, in 2015, where they, where they made a case to the former planning director that mini bars and the sale of alcohol during happy hour or similar occasions was not an intensification of motel use. And also, as we mentioned in the staff report, given the location, it appears to, that the ABC board did not require a letter of public convenience and necessity from the city. In addition, there was also some question by this commission about the history of the community commercial zoning designation. Based on looking at old council reports, our staff notes, because as we mentioned in the report, when the local coastal program was placed on the city and hand it to the city to implement, there were a number of zoning inconsistencies, and we have been trying to resolve some of these inconsistencies, and quite often, a lot of them are just accidents, we're finding, not really intentional, it's just they got a little, we'll say, broad with the brush they were painting with at the state. Staff was not able to confirm or deny whether or not this was intentional, the zoning on this particular parcel. We've seen, we have seen the however, though, that there were multiple revisions to the maps immediately after their adoptions, which show that, once again, as I mentioned, this may have just been an oversight. Folks have never actually honed in on this parcel. It's been other parcels that we've changed. In addition, there was some concern from the commission about if swimming pools are permitted use in this zone. There is a discussion of the swimming pool contained in the staff report as well. Staff did find an approval for the pool, and once again, it, it's up to this commission to provide direction on it. In the past, pools have been approved. The previous planning director felt that pools were just, were an incidental use to these types of operations. In our code, when it says that a swimming pool is not a permitted use, that was looked at in the sense that as a standalone primary use, meaning that you obtain a piece of land and you just strictly build a pool on it and nothing else, and that is its intended use. That, we do believe, is clear in the code, however, with a motel, or a hotel, or a bed and breakfast, pools are typically part of the amenities offered by those types of uses. However, once again, that is a discussion tonight for the Planning Commission and within the purview of the commission, should they choose to not allow for that use. And then also, the Planning Commission raised the question on whether this should be considered a hotel rather than a bed and breakfast. And the applicant's intention is that this is a bed and breakfast. It does meet the definition in, in the code, and it's not the applicant's intention to operate a hotel on this property. That summarizes the, the items that the Planning Commission requested staff look into, so we could pick up where we left off, and attached to your agenda packet, you have Resolution 2346, which the president recommends the approval of the project, which essentially is a recommendation by this body to then proceed to the city council for the adoption of the initial study, negative declaration, and it would be the city council that would approve the, the zone changes that would ultimately allow for the use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Unless there are any sort of quick technical clarifications, we can go to public comment? All right, we have three speaker slips here. One is from the applicant, John Heinz. Do you, is your, do you want to speak, or?
Appreciate 15 minutes of presentation.
Do we give them 15 minutes again? Is that the protocol having?
Correct, yes. It'll be public hearing.
So, we'll, we'll do that first, and we do have two members of the public on that, and we'll see what if any, who, if anybody we have on Zoom down the line. Go ahead, Mr. Heinz.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And you, you can reserve time to, for rebuttal?
If I could, I'd like to reserve five minutes.
Okay, you've got that, guys?
Thank you, Chair.
All right.
Good evening, Sherwoodson Hill, fellow commissioners. My name is John Heinz. I'm with Latham &amp; Watkins, and I'm here tonight with my partner Jim Arnone on behalf of the property owners North Broadway Ventures and Wadebreak LLC. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you all this evening. It's nice to be back. At the last meeting, as the planning director stated, there was additional information that was requested, and since November 6, we've been working hard to get that information. You'll see in your agenda packet, there was a detailed memo that we submitted to staff. We also submitted a letter that was giving an overview of what we provided to staff, and I hope to give a short presentation tonight. So, I can, we can jump past this. Okay, so starting with the prior Tide Pool approvals, as reflected in the agenda report, the deck in the pool was approved by the Planning Commission, and the interior extra reservation was approved by the Planning Department. And as we previously stated, and stated again tonight, there has been no pool use since July 2017. So, going on to the advanced onsite wastewater treatment system, as you heard, the city environmental health administrator did approve the system in 2018. The design considered that this would be operated conjunctively with the next to RioCon, so the design contemplated in the new room, the cooking, the pool use, the gym use, and the staff use. Includes UV disinfection and is a margin of safety with, with the design, so it's, you know, the average, we expect around 1,200, but it was designed up to 1,800 gallons per day. Turn to the Water Works District. As you heard, staff confirmed that the Water Works District didn't require any new approvals here, but we did want to remind, we mentioned this last time, that the property owner had spent a couple hundred thousand dollars in connection with the Casa Malibu Inn remodel. The Tide Pool property actually installed a pool draft hydrant, and it was tens of thousands of dollars, and that was one of the requirements for the well-served letter at that property. Turning to the ABC license history, again, as we've previously shared, the RioCon has type 70 and type 66 licenses, and as you heard, prior to applying for those license, the owners' prior council reached out to the Planning Department, and following some back and forth confirmed that a CUP was not required. They ultimately applied. They listed the former planning director, Bonnie Blue, as the staff member who was contacted as part of that application, and that was ultimately issued. And with respect to the CC zoning, we also dug into this. You know, we looked at the internet, we went through the city databases, and did not identify anything either. We also think it was probably an error, and we also looked at the title reports and didn't see anything on that title that would, that would in any way prohibit a change in zoning or the use. So, now looking at the swimming pool, you know, swimming pools are generally associated with motels, hotels, and bed and breakfast inns. And in Malibu alone, we looked, and, you know, there's six existing motels, hotels in Malibu, and three already have pools. And recently, the Malibu Inn was approved with a pool, and the Sea View Hotel was approved with a pool. And with the city council, when they approved it, they expressly prohibited non-guests from using the pool. So, again, we think that this is absolutely an appropriate use for our bed and breakfast inn. At the last hearing, there were references made to the LIP use table and the treatment of recreational facilities. And again, as I think, it's clear that is not applicable here. We're not requesting a standalone recreational facility. We're requesting a bed and breakfast inn, and it's common amenities like a pool. And again, given city council and Planning Commission precedent, and just the equity we think is appropriate for our pool request. Looking at the hotel versus bed and breakfast inn, again, we're not proposing to provide any additional services for non-guests. So, what is being requested here is very similar to what has been approved at other motels in the city, and that's what we're looking for here. We did want to touch on a couple of other discussion topics that have come up since the last meeting. First, we wanted to respond briefly to the MRCA letter. You know, there is already sufficient access here at the RioCon. It's immediately west of an existing public vertical access right next to Nobu, Malibu, and it's a short walk from the pier access. Both of the property owners previously recorded lateral access, so the shoreline does provide access along there. So, you know, when the Planning Commission previously considered the CDPs for both these properties, they found that there was no legitimate governmental or public interest that would be furthered by requiring vertical access, and nothing has changed here. And we also wanted to touch on the consideration for our neighbors. So, right now, I mean, again, the RioCon is a quiet place. It looks for a tranquil environment, and that will continue with this request. And as it's proposed, there are already a number of very restrictive conditions that are placed on our proposed use, including noise restrictions between the hours of 10 and 7:00, the, the fact that we have limited bar service from a time, we have to close the pool by 10:00, and there's no amplified sound allowed except for ambient music following a noise study. So, we can't even have amplified music, even ambient music, without going through a noise study. So, we do think that this will be, continue to be a quiet place, and we are considerate of the neighbors, and we're supportive of the staff, conditions that are being placed on us. So, I want to conclude here by just bringing it back to where we are. You know, we began this process, as the vice chair noted, eight years ago. That's when these applications were submitted. And there are no structural alterations proposed as part of this project. We'll continue to adhere to required hours. There is going to be no onsite food service, gym and pool for the guests only, no meeting rooms, no bar area. We think this is a simple project, and it's ready to move forward. So, with that, we respectfully request your recommendation of approval tonight. We do trust that the information that we did provide and that staff provided is to answer the questions, and again, we're ready to move forward, so we certainly appreciate the careful consideration of the information we submitted, and of course, we're here for questions. And with that, I'll reserve my remaining time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heinz.
Thank you.
All right, we have, who do we have next? How about Joe Drummond? She's making motions over there, and she's next on my pile. And then after her will be Ryan Embry.
So, basically, in my email to you, the staff report failed to address the requirement of the in lieu fee, which apparently is now being paid just for one of the rooms, but I don't think it's ever paid any for the whole project. So, if it's opened up again as a whole project, it needs to do the in lieu accommodations for the whole 15% of the, the whole entire project. So, what, what is, what is the amount? That's what we want to know. It fails to address the current code violation of the existing swimming pool at adjacent Tide Pool Gallery that is coveted by and proposed for annexation by Nobu RioCon into its hotel operations. The existing pool use would be required to be open to the general public per existing state law as contained in the Malibu Local Coastal Plan and Malibu Municipal Code. The pool must be a public use when in zoning CV1 or CV2. And I, I did submit that chart. A pool is a recreational facility and not attached to a motel hotel definition in the MMC or LCP. If pools will be applied in the future for hotels and motels, then an LCP amendment needs to be completed, allowing their use. It also fails to address the current and ongoing code violations of improper and insufficient parking for the existing uses and the proposed intensification of uses via expansion of overnight accommodation facilities, the increased square footage of development, and the addition of the swimming pool and its outdoor hotel service area. The adjacent Soho House in Nobu caused regular traffic backups in the immediate area due to their lack of parking and valet lines. Opening up this back to CDP opens the entire hotel to go back and, to go back and relook at everything. It averages $3,000 a night. Bed and breakfasts don't usually have pools. It's usually in a house not owned by an LSC or a corporation, and has a kitsch group breakfast room, and usually not a destination itself or a retreat. It's an overnight stop in a sweet, small touristy town, normally where people are out all day. This would create much noise, music, and nuisance, gongs, whatever. This would create much noise, music, and nuisance, gongs, whatever, to neighboring residents being a hotel and not a proper bed and breakfast. The intensification of use proposes independent sewage treatment and disposal. All existing and proposed uses must conform to independent analysis and review by city staff and planning commission that the actual use will comport to the general formula for use on the onsite disposal of the beachfront lot and will not cause increased risk of sewage pollution to public beaches and adjacent private property. And the hotel uses requires a minimum of two parking spaces per sleeping room in addition to allocation for additional support of staff and amenities. The total parking requirement has not been properly calculated nor disclosed, for which an appropriate adjustment by the city for good judgment is warranted. So thank you for considering all this.
Okay, thank you, Jo. Ryan?
I think it's pretty obvious this is a hotel, and they want a pool to go with the hotel. If it was a bed and breakfast, as the previous speaker stated, they wouldn't necessarily need a swimming pool. There's a whole bunch of bed and breakfasts on the East Coast don't have any pool. I think what they want is a heated spa jacuzzi outside. And the hours of use up to 10:00 p.m. could be a problem for those neighbors that have already registered their sound complaints in your meeting packet. I wanted to address a little bit of the amplified sound and the idea of ambient sound. I think you ought to change the word ambient and make it background, because ambient takes into account some background level of noise, which could be anything. Could be the neighbors. You're trying to drown out the neighbors? PCH, the waves? I don't know. So that's, or set an absolute decibel level onsite in addition to the onsite requirement that it not be heard. The conditions for having a pool are appropriate for the commission to consider if that's on the table. And that is that the pool deck area and the pools be exclusively and only for use by registered guests. And if there is going to be any alcohol sales that needs to occur or service, that it must be charged to a registered guest's room. That this is not going to incrementally continue as acquiring neighboring properties and calling it one thing as an interim step to acquisition to get the swimming pool, which is pretty obvious here. So incremental development, serial developments prohibited, and it is discouraged by the coastal commission. And so it is something that does need to be discussed here and now. And the occupancy limit, there didn't seem to be one for this pool deck and pool area, and there should be, not just the absolute maximum for health department reasons, that there should not be any special events and so forth. The food service was mentioned earlier as that they're going to bring the food in from Nobu next door. But Nobu's not set up for takeout. It don't have a takeout window. And that service was not anticipated as far as the use and what's going on between the two properties, because they do share a parking lot under the joint use parking agreement. But there isn't enough parking. So that is why you need to make sure that this operation, which does give considerable room tax to the city if granted, would allow for the two parking spaces per room. That's what's appropriate here for a hotel, a business operation of this high level that would have a swimming pool. And let it be what it needs to be, and have that hearing for the zone change to make it a hotel-eligible zoning property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Do we have any Zoom speakers?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. So then we're back to the applicant. You've got a certain amount of time remaining. How much? Eight minutes?
Eight minutes and 10 seconds.
I promise I won't take that long. We'll keep it moving. Just a reminder, this is, this would be proposing a single additional room. There is no proposed increase in square footage. So these are existing buildings that we're not proposing to increase. So it would allow one additional room. I did confirm that the in-lu fees were paid in connection with the Casa Malibu Inn remodel for those 16 rooms. So that's why the condition would require one additional in-lu fee payment, because those were previously paid back in 2013. You know, I think that said, I think everything else we've talked about, we are sufficiently parked, we're overparked for the number of rooms we have, and then the average guests, I mean, sorry, average employees per shift. And the city has reviewed our onsite wastewater treatment systems, and they are sufficient for the proposed use. So again, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Don't go way too far. We'll probably have questions for you. That closes the public hearing then. So we'll bring this back up to the commission dais. Who would like to opine first or ask questions?
Well, I think one of the things that I learned today, which was, of course, it wouldn't be in the staff report, but one of the things I learned is a lot of people don't drive here. They're brought in by car. They fly in, and they're brought in by a town car or whatever, and they're dropped off. And they're picked up, and they're brought back. So seems like parking not going to be an issue that much. And after looking at everything today, I don't see a parking problem at all. But it was pretty interesting to know that a lot of people just come in and enjoy, and then they leave.
Two, you're good. John?
Well, okay, I'm going to be a while. Of course. Chair, would you follow the procedures and keep the comments being approved by you?
We'll keep this tight. Go ahead.
Now. I read the 2015 report, and I have it here, the original. And I want to read you part of the letter from the attorney, just to set the situation straight. And this is from Alan Matkins, and the attorney's name is Patrick Perry. And there's a lot here. There's three letters, so I'm not going to waste our time following what happened. Okay? But the staff report was pretty, did not recommend approval. They said, you guys review it. Normally, you recommend approval. Tonight, they have recommended approval. Nothing's changed. But this is just the end of a four-page letter. There is no plan for the property for use for anything other than a professional office building. Construction of the deck is clearly permissible, notwithstanding the fact that the deck is not explicitly identified in the MMC or LIP as a possible accessory use in the CC. Wavebreak, which is them, they changed their name, has prepared and agreed to conditions approving restricted use of the pool to occupants of the office building. Okay? Use of the pool for any other purpose would be strictly limited unless, unless the necessary approvals were obtained by the city for the pool or anyone else, the occupants of the office building. This condition alone is clear in ten of the MMC supporting the use of recreational facilities in conjunction with an office building in the CC zone. The staff report reported that it wasn't. Okay? Should additional concerns go on? And then there's pages of what they're not going to do. Permit for the building on the first floor. The exterior use was approved in 2011 for a private kitchen to serve occupants of the property. There were none. The kitchen was not used as commercial, will not be used as a commercial purpose. As shown in the enclosed plan approved by the city environmental health department in '96, the safety system's okay, and blah, blah, blah. But they go on and on and on about what they're not going to do. And what you find is between, and the planning commission said, okay, you can build your pool, but you can't use it. Cannot use it. Okay? Until you change your zoning. They said, they excluded everything else. Okay? It's an office building. Well, since then, pool was used for two years. It had to be shut down. They built a commercial kitchen and serviced outside vendors. They built a suite where they, that's not a kitchenette. It's a full kitchen. Okay? They put in a gym and called it a health club. And that health club was, had one member, them, the Nobu Riacon. No other members, not one, but it was a health club. On and on and on. Now, so when you get these assurances, oh, we are, we're not going to do this, we're not going to do that. What happened in the meantime is the staff approved all kinds of building on this property. They approved remodeling it from an office building to something else without coming to the planning commission. They claimed that they reviewed and that we don't need, you don't need a city's permission for an ABC license. I have never seen any property in Malibu not have to get it. Never. Okay? They put in a gym, and then they called it a club. Because if they had put in a gym, it'd have to be open to the general public, because it's CC zone. They have commercial bar service. They have service to the rooms, I think from 10:00 to 11:00, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. They have food service to the rooms from, I think, 10:00, it might be 7:00 to 11:00. Deliver your food to you. Cook it in the CC zone property or have it brought in. They essentially have increased the need for their staff dramatically. You do not have a pool without a lifeguard. You just don't do it. You don't have a bar that serves till 10:00 o'clock at night without a barman. You don't have food service in the room without somebody to deliver it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Now, the reason, and I, you know, there's tons of stuff here that they're going to say the same thing tonight they said in 2015. We won't do any of that. And they immediately started, and the staff did what's called serial development when at the hearing, they said they would not do that. But everything that they banned in the 2015 approval got built. Everything. Everything got built. Never came to us. No amendment to the CDP. It just got done, because, hey, guys, let us do this. Now, when Dennis says, oh, you don't need parking. You don't need parking. Ask anybody in Malibu, where's the worst parking situation in Malibu? It's next door. Okay? By far the worst. Everybody who drives Coast Highway knows that. The city has looked the other way on Nobu violating their CDP for 15 years. Okay? Doesn't say there's not a traffic problem there. Go there tonight, or go there Friday night. There's a cop out there with his lights on for Friday and Saturday night, in the middle of the road for five hours, every Friday and Saturday night, to try to keep it down to where we don't have a big problem. We had a big problem. We had a wreck the other day. It was a big problem. So to say there's no parking problem is flat out not true. But what's really not true is when you get hotel zoning, and this is the big problem, one of the big problems I have with it.
So, Johnny, let me interrupt for a moment. We need to address these as discrete issues.
Okay, then I'll go through them.
You're going through a lot of different things.
I'm trying to set the pace. If you want me to go through each one at a time, then I'm going to get started yelling at for just spending too much time.
So you're giving us the highlights?
I'm giving you the highlights.
If we're interested, we might want to, okay.
Okay, now, when you give somebody a C1 zone or C2 zone, okay, right across the street, you had a guy sitting right there who spent probably six, seven, eight million dollars, gave the city $4 million, put in a valve, all this kind of stuff to convert part of his property to C2. Here, go ahead, have it. It's yours. That's what's happening here. Six years, following the law, go ahead and have it. That's exactly what's happening here. Now, you're also getting presented with a situation where they say, we want to be a bed and breakfast, but we want a hotel zoning. Well, what's the need? And if you get a hotel zoning, aren't you required to do what the Malibu Inn did when they wanted a pool? Aren't you supposed to have two parking spaces? When the Malibu Inn, which is a legitimate CV2, went to get a pool, we denied it. Okay? We denied it, and one of the reasons we denied it is because they had to count the service area. They had to count the pool deck as an assembly area. It cost them 14 parking spaces. Go ahead and have a pool deck, but no parking spaces. You're a hotel, but don't follow the law. Okay? The parking is massively underparked if you follow CV2 codes. And we, and for no reason at all, we're being asked to give them CV2 codes. Now, I can go through every one of these items you'll see in this 2015 report. You'll see all these things they got it built that were denied in the CV2 report, and you'll see in the testimony and the letters from the lawyer that, oh, no, we're not going to do that. I read part of it. There's pages of it. We're not going to do this. We're not going to do that. Immediately did it. City said, in that staff report, city said serial development is not allowed. And then they did it. Serial development. Okay? No traffic study in the most concentrated traffic disaster in Malibu. And nobody can deny that. Even if we get a staff report saying there's, traffic hasn't increased on Coast Highway in 25 years. Still can't deny it, because people have eyes. Now, when the coastal commission says, gee, you're limiting access to the beach, oh, no, we aren't. Because of the violations of the neighbors, there is no possible way to park and go to the beach at Zucker, whatever his name is, entrance. No possible way. You can't find a parking place there at 10:00 o'clock in the morning on a rainy day, because the staff's parked there. Because they have to make room for their guests. And then they rent the place across the street. Well, we denied, we denied the Malibu Inn, because they were, what, 11 feet away from their 300-feet requirement for an offsite parking spot.
That was the Malibu Beach Inn.
Malibu Beach Inn. Okay? A CV1. We denied them for parking. We denied them for not counting assembly areas. We denied, you know, we denied them. We made Norm follow all the rules. And we're saying, coming in here and say, well, they just want a bed and breakfast, and people go there and they have breakfast. No, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and drinks delivered. Okay? Also, it says in their prior CDP, thou shalt not use the Tide Pool Gallery property with the hotel. Anybody who went there saw the entrance right from the hotel to the swimming pool. Saw the gym. So it's used for nothing else. There is no other use for that building right now.
Let's stop right there. That's a pretty black and white representation. What you're saying, when exactly? And it says thou shalt, you're implying thou shalt not do exactly what they're proposing now, right?
Yeah.
What does it say?
Okay, you want me, I'll read it. It's only 12 pages. Okay?
No, no, no.
Okay?
About, about, about why, you just said, you shall not use the Tide Pool in conjunction with the motel.
Okay. Give me a while, I'll find it. Okay?
Look for that. I have a lot of questions and observations, so maybe I'll step in here for a moment. To be clear, this letter that, and this is for you, John, the letter we got, the 2015 coastal commission letter, that's offered as by way of disclosure? Or are you saying there's new information in it that we need to evaluate?
What letter?
You handed us all on the table.
Oh, no, that's an appeal. Oh, that's an appeal.
Why is this in our hands?
Because it's disclosure. It's required.
Disclosure, okay. So you're not making an assertion with that in some way? Okay. And then a couple of questions of the applicant, if I may. Mr. Heinz, come on up. I'll try to, I've got a couple. I'll try to put them in a row, and there may be others. But just off the top, you sent us another letter today that looked to me very similar to something we've seen before. And I would just like you to help us parse whether and what is new in that letter apart from, I don't think we had seen the MRCA comment before.
The MRCA, otherwise, no. We were just trying to summarize what was in the prior, kind of detailed memo that was attached to the large staff report.
Okay, so I wasn't missing something new?
No, no, other than the MRCA, as you mentioned.
And then, just to, I'm trying to clarify... And then, just to, I'm trying to clarify, it sounds like your, your use of the health club is based on an estoppel argument and that you were citing to the AVCO Community Developers' decision as, as, that, in other words, Waybreak is permitted to sell the, the guest memberships or the, the corporate membership of the RioCon to the club because you have been doing it that way and the government would be stopped from telling you, you can't do it anymore.
Yeah, I, I think I know what you're referring to. So that was, there was some back and forth back in the 2017 period where there was some discussion whether or not the health club was an allowable use. And the applicant, Waybreak, had received a planning clearance for use of that property as a health club. So that was being said then when there was some discussion of whether they were allowed to have a health club or not. They said they had received approval for that health club, so then they were stopped from then having that taken away.
Okay, in, in your memo, you cited this decision, AVCO Community Developers.
Right, so that, so that was, that, exactly. That, that was included in the letter from prior council to the planning commission.
Uh huh. Okay, well, I, I looked that up and the first thing I saw is that it, it does not represent that according to a, a, an appellate decision from published June 2023. And I'll, I'll give you the site here. It's Discovery Builders Incorporated at All, plaintiffs and respondents versus City of Oakland at All, defendants and appellants. And so this is a published state appellate decision with precedential value. And they say, in AVCO Community Developers', our Supreme Court, state Supreme Court, rejected the developers' argument that it did not need to comply with the new requirement because it had a common law vested right to develop land based on the regulations in effect when certain subdivision and grading improvements on the property were authorized. In other words, the, the court rejected the argument that, the estoppel argument. And then ongoing here, in rejecting this argument, the court agreed with the trial court that the state's police power overrode any obligation of the state to perform the, the contract. It found an agreement to exempt the developer from future land use regulation would be invalid and unenforceable as contrary to public policy because it is settled that the government may not contract away its right to exercise the police power in the future. So I think that what that is saying to us is, you, you may have all kinds of good arguments, but the argument that you've been doing it the way you've been doing is not sufficient to say that, that therefore you should be allowed to continue doing it.
No, I don't, I, and again, I, I'm, I'm putting myself back in 2017 right now, but I don't think that's what was being said. What I think was being said is because the city issued an approval for that, not that they were just doing that, but the issue, the city issued an approval for the use. That's why there was an estoppel argument, not, not because they were just doing it. But again, like I said, I'm putting myself back in there, but I believe that's, I believe that's.
Okay. This is so complex, I have so many notes. I probably have a note on, on that point itself, but go ahead and sit down, we'll, we'll talk to staff if that comes back up and.
Absolutely.
It's relevant, we'll pull you up again. Quick question from John.
Who, who gave you the approval? Did the planning commission give you the approval?
No, that was from the planning department.
Okay, so they just, on the cuff, approved a use without coming to the planning commission?
What I see.
Well, it's, oh, apologize, Chair.
Yeah, I'm sorry. What I see as the approval that seems possibly dubious is regarding to the alcohol usage. I don't see.
No.
There's a whole, there's a whole discussion about how, who, who did that, Joyce Parker or was it Bonnie or, you know?
For the, for the plant, the planning department issued a planning clearance for the health club use.
That's the clearance.
Correct.
You're intermixing two issues.
Yeah, I, I am, I'm getting two issues intermixed. Okay, so.
And, and, oh, sorry, Chair.
So here's my question on that, I do have a note on that. So there was a May 2016 planning clearance application, but was there ever any, and this is a question for staff, Richard, if you're following along here, getting into the weeds, but there was the 2016 planning clearance application, but was there ever any amendment to the CDP of the RioCon to include the health club among its activities?
No, there was not because the planning director believed that that scope of work per our code fell within her purview for a decision.
So how could they have made the administrative decision to convert what was agreed, everyone says is a motel, effectively to a hotel with different features, including a gym and a pool? How could they have done that administratively?
It was not converted to a hotel administratively. The use was, that, the motel use was not to change.
So we're still treating as two completely separate entities and businesses at that point?
That is my understanding from reviewing the file.
Okay, John, you were trying to jump in here.
Well, then you're saying the motel use, how about the CC zoned office building use?
What about it?
That's, that's, it was, it was specified that the use was a, a commercial office building could only be used as such at the 2015 hearing and, and you are saying that you approved changes in that administratively. Is that right? You're, you're saying motel, that's just the RioCon. So the gym, for example, the gym and that kind of stuff is not in the motel?
Yes, my understanding from looking at the file was that the, the pool that was approved was part of the office space, the office property, and then you had the motel next door.
My question is, was anything on the office building space, for example, the gym, the kitchen, the apartment, the other uses, was that approved administratively without coming back to the planning commission? They just decided to do that because the, the staff reports makes, it makes a point of serial development?
It's my understanding that, as we stated in the staff report, the, the, the apartment up above and the, the kitchen were, were there prior to the 2015 CDP that was heard by the city, by the planning commission.
The staff report for that 215 hearing said it was vacant. That was, the walls had been taken out, had pictures.
Correct.
So, so it was not there, it was gone, correct? In 2015? And after that, it got built?
Okay, so, John, it sounds like we have a question for the record and this is probably, this may go on, but this, we have some concern about how this was bootstrapped or was it bootstrapped? I think, let's, let's talk about some other things, try to get this, things out on the table here. Related to that, did the city environmental health and the county approve the commercial use of the kitchen? This is a question for staff. We've, we've heard testimony that, that there, that kitchen is being used for catering parties off-site. I think that's a commercial use, just as having a valet for a residence makes it a commercial use, requiring a permit. Was that, was that use ever permitted?
I have a question about that too, which is.
So it appears that if you look at the, what am I looking at here? The 20, 2016 application that was made by the applicant and approved on, it was later that year in September of 2016, they do address that the, the building had a commercial scale kitchen and that the kitchen was used to prepare onsite food for staff and guests and, excuse, for onsite food for staff and then guests staying on neighboring properties. There was no commercial food sales permitted through the kitchen, but it was something that was reviewed by the city in 2016.
Skylar asked me a question quietly, where that information came from. I think it came from our site visit when we were talking and I think it was actually stipulated in the last meeting that they had been serving food off that to private parties.
It's in the staff report somewhere.
And also to follow up, yes, there, in the previous presentation, I'm trying to find it here, there was a condition that was, I believe, brought up as part of the CDP that was approved in 2015 where it also addresses the kitchen and limited the scope of use for that kitchen, that it was, yes, a commercial kitchen, but it was for the limited preparation of food for the, the use that was there. It wasn't associated, it was not to be used as a commercial, the kitchen itself for commercial uses.
So essentially the kitchen, the kitchen that's there is for the guests that are on the building. Is that correct? Can I ask you, the applicant?
Yes, I, I would first like to clarify with respect to the food being served to private parties off-site, that was described as the use at that time. That has not happened since the Tidepool Health Club is open. And then, Commissioner, to your question, again, the health club operates there. The, its members, including the hotel, the RioCon, can have access to the kitchen facilities and yes, that is what it's used for.
Okay, thank you. You asked a question of staff specifically in regards to the health department as to whether or not the kitchen had been permitted by LA County Health Department, not the city. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
I was asking for both.
So, Richard, has there been any approval granted from LA County Health for the commercial use of the kitchen? Yes or no?
Not that I'm aware of, only our health department.
Do you guys have any approval from LA County Health for the commercial use of the kitchen?
Not currently.
Not current?
So, so prior to opening the Tidepool, prior council did reach out to the county health department and asked what approvals would be required to plate, reheat, refrigerate, store food coming from off-site and it was determined it wasn't a specific permit needed. Now, when we operate this as a bed and breakfast inn, we will need to go get public health approval to do that. And again, if, if it's helpful, we're happy to take a condition to that.
No, I, I know that if you were going to get that use, that you would need to do that. My question is whether or not you had it already or not.
No, no, no.
And the answer is no, thank you.
Thanks, John, you.
I have a question. On page three of our current staff report, top of the page, it says, based on permitted history, no commercial food sales have been permitted. A grease interceptor trap was included as part of the OTS upgrade. CDP 13066 allowed onsite staff to consume food prepared in the kitchen and the kitchen was to be used, was not to be used for the commercial purposes related, was to be used for commercial uses related to the chefs preparing food for property owners, other guests staying at other properties. So you did operate it as, according to the staff report, you operated it as a commercial commission. Well, I'm reading the staff report, it's direct. It, it says you did do it and it was for off-site properties. Is that not true? Is the staff report not true?
I, I think there's, there's a timing issue associated with that and I don't think that was a commercial use. Yes, that kitchen was used to make food for guests at homes outside of, within Malibu, but that is not taking place now. That was describing what was happening at the time. That has not happened since the opening of the health club.
Was it legal at the time?
Yes.
You got a CDP saying you could have a commercial kitchen in that building?
We received approval through the APR, the Administrative Plan Review, to have an interior and exterior remodel and that included the kitchen.
Did it not, it say, no commercial use, only for the members of the office building? And this is a question for Richard because this is your staff report, top of three of six. I read it directly.
I may have misheard something, but what I think I missed was, I heard it, commercial purposes, but the staff report says non-commercial purposes.
No, it says prepared for off-site use. Yes, it was banned from, from commercial purposes, but I believe that any agency that had to do with food would say, you cook something here and you deliver it something there, it's, it's commercial use. They were serving off-site. And that's what it says right here on the top of three of six.
John, I, I think we.
Well, I just want an answer, have staff made an error here or that, is that true?
I think Richard doesn't have the answer.
Well, why do, why wouldn't he have the answer? It's written.
We've raised the question here, we, it's in the record, we have a, a whole series of things to consider here.
No, I, I, I understand that and this is in the record and all I'm trying to see is if they meant what they wrote. You can't, you can't say, well, it's in the record, but we don't know whether we meant it or not.
Yeah, you can say it is in the record, it's intentional, let's, let's take that as written. Now, Drew has a question.
In your application, you mentioned that you're going to need parking for eight, approximately eight staff. That's, that's all you guys are going to need to.
So we have parking for up to eight. Actually, under the code, we need parking for six because the average number of shift employees is six across the three shifts, but the max employees we'll have is eight, so we have parking for that.
And the food service that you're going to be doing is only going to be for overnight guests of the hotel?
Just of the hotel, that's correct.
But overnight guests?
Yes, that's right.
Would you be open to having conditions to the CDP stating that?
That the food will be only available to overnight guests?
Yes.
Yes.
And that you only need parking for up to eight people, eight staff?
Well, I think, I, I think, again, from a, from a staffing standpoint, we only need six, so we're overparked for that. So I think we would, if we, if we needed to provide parking for eight, I mean, that would be beyond what the code requires, but we do have that right now. So I, I apologize, I didn't answer your question. What do you?
Just concerned for taking into consideration the neighbors, you know, that might be doing an event where you need to have 15, 20 staff there, that type of thing.
So. I, I don't think that they can do that because they can't do that.
They can't do events.
Can't do events, but I think that the point where you're trying to make is that you want to require all staff parking on-site.
Yep.
So just say that.
Okay.
Would you, would you serve, would you serve food on the pool deck?
Hang, hang on, we, we have a proposed condition, right?
Well, I know, but.
Probably, there's probably consensus or.
Well, it's important, part of that condition is where do you serve the food?
I, I think there's.
And the neighbors are complaining about the noise, so could the whole hotel go down and have a party at, at the pool deck and get served food?
Absolutely, just not after 10 o'clock at night.
And you think that's a problem?
I think that's completely fine.
That's not a restaurant.
It's not my business.
I'm sorry, what, what was just proposed was a parking on-site requirement?
For, for staff?
Yes.
That's an acceptable condition.
Can't serve around the overnight guests?
Correct.
Talking to the mic, Drew.
Okay.
But I, I would like to make a motion to approve this project as condition to require the staff parking on-site and with all the other conditions that are in this item as stated by staff.
And so, I just want to be sure and let me interrupt you, I, I kind of have that written down, so I want to make sure that we encapsulate it all before it. So, one of the conditions, and I'm not, I'm taking these in no particular order, is.
We're not voting yet.
We're not voting yet. This is just for clarification of the motion. I believe it's number 25. It will be changed to say the swimming pool shall only be used by registered overnight guests of the facility and no use of any kind shall be allowed later than 10 p.m. All pool lights must be turned off for the night, no later than 10 p.m.
I have no issue. I, I, I see issue with that merely because if I'm at the pool, if I'm at the hotel, let's say I got my kids want to come visit me or something like that, right? My kids want to go in the pool, they should be allowed to go in the pool. They may not be registered as an overnight guest. I think there should be zero issue with that. So I just want to be very clear on that, that the pool is for the guests of the hotel and that's what it's for. Plain and simple. I don't have, I don't need to specify that's an actual overnight guest.
Okay, I was just.
You know, like.
That's fine.
You got to remember that sometimes.
Got it, so, so I, I hear you, we will, from what I just said, we will remove the, the qualifying language, registered overnight, and that say the swimming pool shall only be used by guests of the facility and no use of any kind shall be allowed later than 10 p.m.
What was that, until 10 p.m.?
And no use of any kind shall be allowed later than 10 p.m. I mean, after, excuse me, after, after.
Yeah, the pool's closed at 10 p.m.
Can I ask a question on that? You took out the word registered guest, which means.
Registered overnight guests at the, at the behest of.
Yeah, you took it out.
Correct.
Which means the manager of the hotel could say, we got an open house today, you guys are all invited.
Awesome, where's my invite? I'm just joking.
No, I'm, I'm saying that, that, taking that out.
Right.
Makes the possibility to have 100 people.
Vice Chair Mazza, I, I didn't take anything out at the direction of the motion maker, I took it out.
I, I understand that, I just want to be clear that that's what we're taking out. For.
For purpose-
They can ask, they don't have to pay to be guests. They can ask to be guests and they're guests. That's right, that's the way the motion reads.
Sure, sure. And so just to continue this exercise, Commissioner, can I read the next one? And so I believe I was going off of your, Commissioner Leonard, "All parking for staff shall be provided on-site," and I believe you referenced in "In no event will staff exceed eight employees at any one time." Is that what you were getting at, or did I misunderstand that? Is that-
Well, I, again, we expect our maximum number of employees to be eight. We expect our average number to be six. That's what we're overparked for. We will, we absolutely are in agreement with a condition that requires all staff to park on-site, but I don't want a condition that would limit, again, I'm not saying we would have that, but just limiting the specific number of employees.
I think that the policy should really merely read, "The employees have to park on-site."
So then we will remove the-
All employees.
Yeah, so it'll just be, yeah, "All parking for staff shall be provided on-site."
Correct.
Okay, is there a second for Skyler's motion for purposes of discussion?
Second.
Okay, so moving on.
Wait, wait, now, what is this? What are we voting on?
We're not voting on anything yet.
Then why do you need a second?
Because he put a motion on the table to approve with a condition. We will, we will develop this, we will see where we go with this. I, I have a, an overriding concern that this whole concept of the conjunctive use, they're basically merging these two parcels together in whatever terminology you want to use. It's, and what they are creating is a hotel. They have admitted it. In their talk, in their discussion, they use the word "hotel." In their advertising, you can rent a Lamborghini in town, and this was an article in, I don't know, the LA Times, but we talked about it the last time. You can rent the car and come out and stay at the hotel. It's not just a overnight accommodation, it has additional uses which make it a hotel under the definition in the LCP. Got the pool, and the Health Club, and the food, and the alcohol they want. So with all that on the table, I think we cannot, in this neighborhood, deal with the parking as anything other than as a hotel. And statutorily, the hotel parking requires two spaces per room, and I appreciate the comment that some people don't come in a car, but, but that is what the code says. And so if you do that, if you start with 17 rooms times two, that's 34 spaces, add six employees, which they, I would argue, you probably want to add eight, because the way they broke it down, you'd have eight most of the time, but call it six, that's still 40 spaces, and yet they only have 26. So we're substantially underparked for the range of uses that they're talking about using here. I find that problematic. I'm going to go on with some questions and comments here. I don't understand how the, and I don't know how relevant this is now, maybe, maybe staff can tell me or the attorney, but with the way this corporate membership has worked for the Health Club, wouldn't you have to, wouldn't you have to either be a member of the corporation or an employee of it to use the corporate membership? How does a corporate membership apply to the perfect strangers who come and just pay money to stay at the hotel? Is that, is that permissible? Is that legal to just say, "Yeah, the RioCon has a corporate membership, that they can just decide whoever they want can be their guest at the Health Club"? So, I mean, it just, something about it feels off to me, but I, I can't put my finger on it, so maybe it's fine. I don't know.
And so Chair, I am at a loss. I mean, I understand the question-
Right.
-conceptually, but, but no, I must admit, I'm, I have very little experience in terms of corporate ownerships of gyms and kind of what that looks like. I'll, of course, defer to Director Malika if he has any additional information or the applicant.
Well, I mean, and the relevance is not clear because of the way they're talking about this whole conjunct, conjunctive merger. I think maybe it's only relevant to the extent that they're trying to rely on it as, as the practice they have had, and with the estoppel argument that has been overruled on the, the case we were referring to. All right, I'm trying to stay organized here. I think maybe the history of the community commercial zoning, the CC zoning, I can't accept that that was just a mistake. It is the law. It's the zoning plan, and however that was decided originally, I think we have to give that the weight it deserves. And I, I think it's possible that it was decided because somebody looked at it and said, "You couldn't do a hotel on this property, because where would they park? You can't do the parking here, so we're going to keep this listed as CC." That's speculation, but it's the only plausible reason that I've can think of, other than what I've heard from staff, is that, "Oh, well, maybe it was a mistake in the first place." Alcohol. I'm not sure where they got to where they are with it already. And, and I guess as a, as a policy question, I think we have to wonder about more alcohol in this zone. We, the city has a real conflict, sort of almost a Jekyll and Hyde thing about this area, where on the one hand, we're saying, "Well, this is the commercial place in town, and that's where we should concentrate all that touristic activity and make it a real hub, and the hubbub, and we'll have the hotels." And, and that might work if, if this were reconfigured as a 25 mile an hour boulevard for this half-mile or mile, or, you know, some, something along that stretch. But on the one hand, we're saying, "Call this the tourist zone," and the other hand, we're lamenting all the trouble on PCH and the lack of parking, and the accidents, and the deaths, and the, and this is one of the key spots. This and Las Flores are the key spots. So I feel like we're, you know, kind of thinking with two different heads, or I don't know what the right metaphor is here, but I, I think it's just problematic. And so in that context, the history of this, let's see. How, I guess this is a question for staff. It says that it's okay to have the alcohol because the municipal code doesn't regulate alcohol in motels. How could it be that the MMC does not address alcohol in places of lodging? That, that, is there, there must be somewhere some catch-all phrase like "commercial establishment" or something that would encompass a lodging. Drew?
I mean, you got a place to sleep it off. It's all good.
The what, the applicant?
Yeah.
Well, they have a liquor license, but they don't have approval from the city to be doing alcohol in this environment and in this zone. It's two separate issues, right? So, and it almost sounds like they're, they're in effect saying that they're benefiting by a loophole. And I asked, I asked Adrian about this, and here's what he wrote back to me. I'll just quote it, so I'm not adding any opinion or anything. "The applicant found a letter from the owner's former council to Joyce Parker Bozalinski, making the case that the addition of minibars and complimentary happy hours and similar circumstances were incidental to a motel and no more intensive." And then it skips to the history, skips to, "The ABC application added Bonnie Blue as the contact person for the city, insinuating that Bonnie and/or Joyce agreed with the owner's council." But we have no decision on record, correct? We have an, I mean, this is Adrian telling me, "There's an insinuation that somebody in the past said it's okay that the motel should be serving alcohol." That's all, that's all we're relying on here. Is there something more formal that said, "Yeah, no, this is okay. We decided this in the past, and, and, you know, it was properly reviewed"? I have not had a chance to go through the files and look for a letter like that, and all I can say, though, is that the code does not specify if a hotel or a motel or a bed and breakfast has alcohol. It, it goes to the use. So motels, you know, typically, as we put in the staff report, the code focuses on its drive-up. It does not have a restaurant. It, it, a hotel, typically, you have a parking lot, hallways. It has amenities like a restaurant, conference rooms that could be rented, things for that use. In the past, when we're dealing with alcohol, yes, we have seen it as part of the conditional use permits. For example, with the Malibu Beach Inn Hotel, there was alcohol as part of the food service of the restaurant. We listed it as such, and we do that primarily because if a letter of public convenience is required, we are looking for direction to issue that letter of public convenience. That's why when you see resolutions before you with the inclusion of alcohol services, you see in there a condition where the planning commission is directing, the planning director to issue that letter of public convenience. That was not needed with this use. Also, in this case, there was an existing motel with a minibar, and- It was, we're talking about Casa Malibu now? That is my understanding, and the planning director at the time believed that the alcohol itself did not change the use. I'm sure that if they would have felt it was a change in use, because that's what comes before the commission for CUPs, then you would have seen it. But apparently, that was the decision that was made at that time. Regardless of what happened at that time, we are here today with an application that encompasses all of that for the consideration of the planning commission. So just because they had it, that's wonderful for them. The question is, what is it that this commission wishes to approve or deny this evening?
Right.
And that's all before you. So you could also look at it as if you think this was inappropriate, this is now the fix. Richard- On this point, John?
It's on this point. When Joyce decided to give the June Hotel, which is a motel, a swimming pool, and not report it to the planning commission, she just made an opinion. She also made an opinion that they must come to us to have alcohol service, okay? It's exactly the same situation. Exactly. Motel, motel.
Okay, and what Richard is saying-
And so, no, my question is, why is the June Hotel different than the Nobu Roku?
Well, he's saying, they are coming to us now and asking for-
But they didn't. And he said it was okay for them to just go out and get a license. When Joyce determined, not Joyce, Bonnie determined, "No, you must come to us for a CUP," and they decided not to.
All right, I think we've aired that issue, and, and Richard is right. It's something that happened in the past, and we're deciding something now. Drew?
Can you kind of lead towards-
Mike, Mike.
Can you maybe lead to a, some sort of countering motion, or let's take this somewhere? It feels like we're just going through a filibuster right now.
Can I, Craig?
I'm filibustering?
A little bit, yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Well, why don't we just vote yes to every item before it happens?
John, John?
The-
Skyler.
The issue that's here before us tonight is to remedy this and to make this clear. So if you don't believe that this should be granted any sort of a license associated with alcohol, then just say that, and that can be, you know, that is the ultimate deciding factor in your vote on a motion that's put forward. That's okay. But to go and, you know, whether there was an airmaid or there was not an airmaid, I think that it's our job here tonight to decide whether or not you want to see that move forward or you don't want to see that move forward.
Okay.
I think when you look at other similar properties, whether, you know, that bed and breakfast, hotel, motel, I don't know of one that doesn't serve alcohol in the city, and not to say that I've stated all of them. So I think that that is very much in line with the uses of other similar style properties in the city. So I don't think that there should be any issue with that.
Let's, let's keep moving forward. I think we're past, we're past that point.
No, no, I just want to make a point, and that is that you, you cannot have planning unless you have rules, and they're not on whether you like the guy. So, for example, we had a planning commissioner, I mean, director who said, "No, no, you can't have liquor in a motel unless you come to us for a CUP." We denied a hotel a swimming pool because-
No, John, I agree with you, but that's why you have it in front of you right now. They're here at a hearing.
You have it in front of you so you can make a decision based on consistent rules. You don't pay favors, you didn't pay favors for dorm, you didn't pay favors for the guys. They listed the hotel, the supposed motel at Western Beach. It never got approved, okay? There are lots of them that don't have it, because they have to come to us for a CUP. And they, they are leaning backwards on saying how many employees they can have. Nobu had 26 employees on their CUP. They admitted at a prior meeting, a later meeting, they had 126 on one shift.
That's great. If they have 126 employees, we just wrote it into the ordinance, if it was to be passed, that all of them have to park on-site.
We have that in the Nobu ordinance. How would that do us?
This isn't the right-
You're applying this to a different project.
Let's, 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 let's keep here in the present right now. I'm trying to respond to Drew's concern about where I'm going with this. I think that what, given the complexity of this place, this, this part of the city, the safety hazards, et cetera, I think the best solution for us here would be to, in some manner, legitimize the existing motel under a CV1 designation, not making, not, not setting it up as a CV2, which would allow it for further expansion as a hotel and/or potentially piecemealing with the properties next door, et cetera. In other words, to, to legitimize it without increasing the intensity of the use, without, which, which would invoke the parking requirements of a hotel. And contrary to your take on the pool and the, the Health Club, I think the way to handle this would be to say, as is the case under a hotel, if you want to have a pool, you need to have that open to the public, and that there would be an option to say, like the Annenberg Pool in Santa Monica, for example, where you can pay, I think, like 15 bucks to go swim in the pool, or you could have a, a private membership option for residents of the city for a couple hundred bucks a month, or something to come swim in the pool. That that would, that would come closer towards fulfilling the community component of this that, that we're, that we're needing to respond to, and would allow them with the, the neighboring hotel, in whatever language they want to say to their guests, "Oh, well, you're sort of like the preferred customers of the neighboring pool and Health Club," and, you know, you could, you could frame that in advertising language. But I don't think we should be intensifying the alcohol. I don't think we can be calling it a hotel as they have been. And so, excuse me for a mo- There's some of the CUP findings I can't make. Many of them justify this, that, on the basis that, quote, "The intensity and density are commensurate with surrounding development." That's problematic to me. Many of them are justified on that basis, and that's the problem. If only, but this is already too dense and intense with the whole neighborhood with respect to alcohol, parking, traffic, et cetera. And it, and it gives short shrift to the fact that we have residences right next door within five feet. On the general plan amendment, resolution cites the Land Use Policy Number 4.4.3, quote, "The city shall regulate design of new bed and breakfast inns to foster country-in-type establishments and regulate the size and design of our hotel development." I don't know how you do country-in in this most commercially dense place, notwithstanding that RioCon means in Japanese, and then that's the vibe they're going for, but it's not the vibe when you have alcohol and maybe a noisy pool and more traffic. So, you know, that language in the general plan amendment, it says we should be fostering rustic places and limiting hotel development. So again, I, I think the best solution would be to make it a CV1 and, and allow them to operate legally and in a coordinated way, but not, not expanding the intensity of the use.
Comment?
Comment.
Nobody here has explained CV2 in this project. Why are we saying it's not a hotel, but we're going to zone it for a hotel? Why is that happening?
That's-
It's to get around the rules, okay? It's to say- It's to say, "Well, they don't want to park it properly, so we'll say it's not a CV2, but we'll give it to them because if they want to change it to a hotel later, no problemo." And that is the way you do zoning. You do zoning on intended use. And then when you put where it is and you say, and under the same ownership, there's nothing to say. You couldn't tear down the Soho House in Nobu and build a two-story hotel there with 75 rooms, 150 rooms, 200 rooms. It's a bigger lot than the Malibu Beach Inn.
Once you do the zoning.
Yeah. And then, again, I think we have to realize that we've already decided this. We told the Malibu Beach Inn. We don't have an amendment here to say you can't go out on the deck and assemble. That's what killed their pool. The requirement to have an assembly area and a pool deck is, I think, and Richard could correct me, is one parking space for every 250 square feet. That's not even mentioned in our staff report. Not even mentioned and it's a requirement. And this is why the Malibu Beach Inn lost. And they're a real hotel.
Okay. I sense that there's a majority here that wants to approve the application. I want to add a couple or propose a couple other conditions, if you guys would like them or don't. One, we've got the neighbors next door. I think if you're going to pass it, I would say no noise around the pool between 9:00 PM and 9:00 AM, not 10 to 8:00. You've got residents right there.
No, I understand. I just think that when does the noise ordinance for the city come into effect? It comes into effect at 10:00 PM, I believe, at night. So, I think that that's completely reasonable.
10 to-
10:00 PM.
To 8:00 AM is-
No, we can start construction here at 7:00 in the morning. So, if I can start construction at 7:00 in the morning and I want to go to the pool and swim at 9:00 in the morning, that should be completely fine.
Construction is a transient thing that might happen for a few months or a year next to your house, but it's not a forever issue.
The regulation on commercial, Scott, the regulation on commercial is you may not hear at five feet from the property. That's what is proposed for the Malibu Inn across from the pier. That's what's proposed. That's the code.
Drew?
I don't think it's applicable, I'm sorry. Other approvals, we haven't come with those kind of conditions. I think we need to stay uniform with what we've approved in regards to hours of use to other approvals.
We have done that many-
We have done it in other places.
I'm just going to add this, that it is on the beach, the noise concern that, and it's also on PCH. So, I would see a lot more noise coming from a breaking wave than I would see from somebody splashing in the pool.
So, we don't have an appetite for that, fine.
Correct.
Another, but I wonder if we would want to do a, we have the noise rule that says it has to be X decibels five feet from the residence.
Zero interest in that here. You have, they have no amplified music if they want to, if they want, hold on. If they want to do any sound, they have to go through a sound study in order to do that, which will be addressed at that time.
That's what I'm saying.
So-
They're talking about ambient music already.
Yes. If they want to do that, they have to do whatever the sound study that's associated with other shows, if that's compliant.
What we did on, I forget if it was Nobu or Soho now, but we basically, there were residents up the hill that were concerned about and we basically said, "Look, you guys work together, turn the sound up and see how far you can go without bothering us up the hill." It seems like either you do that directly with the neighbors here or you impose, you say, "We've got this rule already that it says five feet outside the neighbor's window, it can only be X decibels," and to actually confirm that that's happening.
Excuse me, why don't we ask, why don't we ask the staff what the rules are? For example, we have an item coming to us from the Tranqus Market. You cannot hear the music from the houses. That's one of the provisions. This is exactly the same, exactly the same. Every commercial building that's next to a residence, you're going to see that provision.
Would you guys be okay with a rule that said no music around the pool?
Well, I think, I think right now, there is a condition that says amplified sound outdoors is prohibited except that ambient music is allowed in the swimming pool and deck areas as long as it is not audible within five feet of any neighboring building and the applicant prepares a noise study.
So, not audible.
All the language is already there.
Okay. That's a pretty stringent condition.
And, okay, what about any conditions on special events or occupancy? Like Ryan Pult mentioned, they have no limit on occupancy. How many people can be around the pool? Drew just said building and safety will, okay, but they can do that, but we also have the ability, if we want, to say, "Let's have this be a more low-key place."
I think it is a low-key place. It's been presented that way. I think it's always been a low-key place. I think that the-
So, why not put a bar on that?
Hold on. I think the bigger issue that you see here in regards to it not being a low-key place, to me, it really resides around parking, right? I'm well aware that neighboring properties in the vicinity have very complicated parking issues. So, I think that the applicant here very much recognizes the city's concern associated with that, knows that they're on a very thin line in regards to the zoning and things that have been brought up already. Bottom line is, make sure that your employees park there. And if the size of any event that happens there, you can't park on site, you can't have the event. Like, that's kind of how I read it.
You want to put a condition into that?
So, I don't know, I was going to ask the city attorney how to address that. So, you know, if they want to have an event, either all the parking's on site or any guests are shuttled to and from, from some other location. But you can't just merely go and say, "We're having a 50-person," they don't even see, the other thing is that they don't have meeting rooms and stuff like that, right? So, it's not like a hotel in that sense. And I don't, I'm not looking at it like that. I just want to be very clear that it doesn't have some of the, like, it doesn't have the stuff, I've been there, it doesn't have the stuff to facilitate that.
Well, you could have a birthday party with 100 people around the pool.
Again, you have, you have a parking issue to deal with.
Well, can I ask you to ask a question as part of this? There is a requirement under the CV2 zone that you must count assembly areas and decks towards parking. Now, if you're going to give them a CV2, that's a requirement. And that's what I was maybe pointing out about the Malibu Inn. They got turned down because of that. Are you going to say, "You got to park that?" If they have a CV1, they don't have to. If they got a CV2, it's in the law.
I have, I have no issue with that. I have no issue with the property being operated and then increase or, I guess, decreasing the amount of rooms in order to add the room above, where you're going from 22 to 17, and the property being used the way that it is right now. I have zero issue with that.
But my question is, how do you get around the requirement to count assembly areas as parking? They don't have them, so obviously, if you're going to have convention, whatever you have there, and you say they don't have a meeting room, where are they going to meet? They're going to meet on the deck. That's why they put that provision in there.
If you want, I'm happy to put, my question for Patrick was going to be, how best to put the restriction in there that basically says, "Guests, employees, whatever you're doing at this facility, all parking is required on site."
So, I'll kind of rely upon Director Mollka here. I believe the, at least the condition of approval that I'm looking at is number 29. And so, I just want to be sure, Commissioner Peak, because I know you said previously that they may need to shuttle or something like that. And so, is it your, instead, your contention that in the event anything goes on there, all required parking must be provided on site or something to the extent that, you know, in the event that the required parking is not provided for on site, the property owner shall provide a parking plan to the satisfaction of the planning director with, of course, the caveat that has been discussed and agreed upon before, that all parking for staff, no matter what is occurring on the property, shall be provided on site.
Sounds amazing.
Okay, so just for clarity, the 29 will read as follows, if you mind, Chair Hill, I'll go through it quick.
Oh, hang on. Question for Richard. Richard, what of what they're asking for, if they could have everything that's in that application, what couldn't they do if this was a CV1 rather than a CV2? Why do they need a CV2?
I think the simple answer is it's their request. The use that they're proposing, it's my understanding from confirming this with staff, that this use would fit under a CV1. And I know that there is concern by a few of the members that this could lead to something much larger, but I think it's important to realize that should they do anything, should they wish to create a hotel, should they wish to demolish a building and build a new building, should they wish to open up a restaurant to the public? These are all things that would have to come back to the planning commission. They're not staff level, they're public hearings because of either the development permit associated with it, because that would be a coastal development permit. And if they wanted to open up a hotel on the beach, that would be a CUP and that would come back to this body as well. So, the underlying zoning does not provide them a vested right or a deeded right to some sort of development. It provides the opportunity to apply for it, but ultimately, it is up to the decision makers.
Well, follow, John.
Yes. So, you've got three properties that are owned by the same guy. If the Tidepool Gallery has rooms in it and a pool, and they don't change anything, nothing, could the properties next door associate them with their hotel and use their facilities if they are owned by the same person with the same zoning and no change on the Tidepool Gallery? Could the Tidepool Gallery become part of a hotel without applying for anything since they already have the zoning and they're not changing anything? And that's the problem. And that's why I need to answer that question. Because there is no apparent need for a CV2. You just said it. So, why? Why should we grant them a CV2 unless it's for that purpose?
I think the first thing that you would need is a hotel next door.
What?
Under your situation there, I think the first thing you would need is a hotel next door, which there isn't.
Yeah, but I'm talking about this property. We're not talking about that property.
Correct. But there is no hotel that I'm aware of adjacent or on this property.
I know, but that doesn't mean there isn't going to be one.
John, this is ask and answer. He's just told us they could get away with a CV1. Everybody's heard that now.
Okay, so I'm going to ask, offer a friendly amendment that we grant them a CV1. A CV2 is millions of dollars of, for nothing. Free money.
Can I ask you, Apple, can I question along those lines?
Narrowly, please.
Yeah. What's your issue with CV1 versus CV2?
Well, a bed and breakfast is just as acceptable in a CV2 as a CV1. We began this process in 2015 and we are at step one. We will still go before the city council and then we have to go to the coastal commission. The CV2 will give us flexibility. If we ever wanted to come back to you, we would need to do that for any hotel, including if it was just at the Tidepool property, it will need another CUP. So, it does give us flexibility. But, again, before we would ever get a hotel, we would have to come back to this body, to the city, to get that approval, as opposed to sometime in the future having to go through an LCP amendment. We're doing that now and we're going to go through that process. We'd like to do that once and then, again, we have to come back to you all before we can have approval to change it.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I feel about the parking issue and you've said, you know, you've acknowledged that there's a lot of problems. It's a case of, you know, fool us twice, shame on us. Several times with the same property owner, we have set up parking and found it to be woefully inadequate. And it just seems like-
Let me ask you and John a question. If this gets approved right now and we did this under CV1, would you both vote for it and support it as is, as we've discussed?
For me, not with the alcohol component, but I feel like it would be closer to something-
It's a yes or no. It's not with or without the alcohol. Yes?
Well, we don't bargain here, but I-
No, I have a question for you. That's my honest question.
I would be more, if you could attack some of the other problems, like traffic and assured parking.
Okay, so the answer is no.
Here's my, could I ask him a question? We're here just to hear this project, okay? Just the Tidepool Gallery or whatever it is, Nobu Roku. Can you conceive of any way of taking that property and making a hotel out of that property alone? Because of the lack of size for parking, can you conceive doubling the parking on that particular piece of land and making it a hotel?
I don't know how to answer that, Vice Chair.
Well, yes or no? I mean, you know how big the property is?
You're asking an attorney to do something that an architect does.
Well, okay. What I'm saying is, you're saying we may have future plans, but those plans aren't necessarily just for this property, right?
I wasn't saying we have future plans. I'm saying we wanted the flexibility in the future, but we are asking for a bed and breakfast in, that's what we're here for. And that's what we're asking.
What he's asking is, what do you want flexibility for?
Well, I think we would want flexibility to, if we wanted to come back in the future to this body, to get approval for a hotel. We would obviously have to go through and meet all of the requirements for a hotel if we were to have outside guests come, but we're not asking for that now, we're not looking for that.
Yeah, but that wasn't my question. My question was, this particular piece of property, not considering the others, because that's all we're talking about tonight, under the present LIP and city codes, can you conceive of ever finding an architect or any other professional that could make that size of a property into a hotel with double the parking you have now?
With respect, Vice Chair, I can't answer that.
John, yeah, that's-
So, in other words, you're asking it for future use on other projects?
I'm not, I don't think I am.
All right. I think we've made our concerns apparent for the record. Unless there's further discussion, we should call the question.
Well, the question, what I want to, so Scott, are you saying you want to give them a hotel?
Well, I asked you a very clear question is-
Okay, I'll tell you what.
The only way that I would entertain-
If you want to give them a CV1, I'll vote for it because we're not going to be the final deciders anyway.
The thing about if you go CV1, then at least you're not legitimizing and, on paper, an insufficient parking arrangement.
I understand that and I recognize that it's only on paper, so that's what my reluctance is to do it, because I don't think if we did, whether we do it either way, that's not going to change the parking that's there right now. That's what my point is, saying that if they come back with anything that's really a hotel under the, under CV2, the whole property is going to have to get redesigned.
Right.
Even if you did it with an adjacent property. So, that's why I don't see the, and at that point, it's going to get addressed, so that's why I'm okay doing that. That's my point.
The zoning's not going to be addressed. So, that's why, I'll vote for it if you say CV1 because-
Because you know it'll never happen.
No, I know that we should not be giving away super valuable zoning and a hotel zoning in Malibu is super valuable for no reason at all. And a future, a future use that comes before some future planning commission or city council or coastal commission should consider what's going on then. We shouldn't decide now that we're going to give them $5 or $6 million worth of entitlements that they don't want to use.
Yeah, you know, I, as I'm thinking about it, I do have issues with like the alcohol, for example, but at the same time, I have said and I believe that we should be trying to legitimize what they have because they're in a kind of limbo state right now, right? So, to answer your question, yes, I would vote yes if it were a CV1. And at least we, that's a compromise in my view, but it solves some of the problems.
Okay, so now I have a question for Richard, which is basically, we've kind of outlined some of the things that would change, whether it was CV1 or CV2. Basically, CV2 really just gives any element of provision for something that may or may not happen in the future. Am I understanding that correctly or am I missing something?
No, you've got that correctly. It just, it does provide them with more opportunities for applications in the future.
Okay.
And it creates an automatic, it creates an automatically non-compliant parking situation.
I understand that. Okay, so Drew and Dennis, are you, if we change this and make this CV1, is that something that you can support, yes or no?
No.
Drew?
Eric, how much work is it to come back and try to change to a CV2 again? How much time have they put into this?
They've put in, it's been eight years since they started.
But John won't be on the commission then, so- But John won't be on the commission then, so...
Yeah, well, Norm put in eight years, and they made him pay $4 million for it. And, and Richard, let me ask you a question, and this will answer part of Drew's question. If they come back to put in a hotel, they have to put in the whole application for the whole banana anyway, right? It gives them a, a free, free advertising point and a free, free saying, I got a CV2, and the ability to try to slide in a giant hotel when they get rid of Nobu. But that's all provisional on what happens 10 years from now, or 15 years from now. And so is that not true? It's not like they could walk in there tomorrow with a CV2 and have a hotel. And, and the point I'd like to make to you is, this is for this property only, okay? They have to go through a whole process on all the other two, or four, or five, or six that they buy.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make an alternate motion. What's the word for that? A substitute motion, that we approve it with the condition stated as a CV1. Do I have a second for the substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Well, you're including Skylar's provisions, right?
Yes, yes. So that, as a substitute motion, we vote on that first, correct?
That is correct, Chair Hill.
Let's call the substitute.
And so if I may, I just want to be sure we all know what...
Please.
And so I, I am gonna, because myself and Director Malika have word of the language, so I want to be sure, and for the applicant's notice as well, so condition number 25 shall read as follows. The swimming pool shall only be used by guests of the facility, and no use of any kind shall be allowed later than 10:00 PM. All pool lights must be turned off for the night, no later than 10:00 PM. Condition approval number 29 shall read as follows. The property owner and operator shall not use the parking lot for any use other than the uses and activities explicitly permitted for the subject parcel or as permitted by a temporary use permit or filming permit. In the event that the required parking is not provided for onsite, the property owner or operator shall provide a parking plan to the satisfaction of the planning director that offsite parking has been secured. And here's, all parking for staff, no matter what is occurring on the property, shall be provided onsite, such that...
The, the offsite thing, is there some provision that prohibits street parking? Because the point is that...
Correct, yeah, that, that, so it says there to the planning director that offsite parking has been secured.
Which is not street, okay.
Yes.
Question of conflict. I believe this has a condition that they have to follow the dark sky ordinance.
Yes.
Which requires outside uses be lights, motion censored. Is that taken out?
That is not true.
Are we accepting the...
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't take anything out of those conditions.
So that's a conflict, right?
It's a commercial establishment.
Doesn't matter, commercials are covered under the dark sky ordinance.
Yes.
John, the...
No, I'm just asking, because they conflict.
John, this and any other building in this city will eventually be covered by the dark sky ordinance.
They all are now. It's a law.
If it's not covered already, and the city has not gotten to it, they will need to submit a plan to the city to be approved.
So what Skylar's saying is, dark sky ordinance takes precedence over what he just, what you just said.
And so Chair, if I may finish the motion?
Please.
And then, of course, for the substitute motion, it is a change from the request to CV2. Instead, grant the, I believe it's a general plan, and help me out here, Director Malika, general plan amendment and zoning map amendment. Instead of changing it to CV2, it is to CV1.
It's LIP amendment, too.
LIP, excuse me, thank you very much, Mr. Fisher. Correct. LCP amendment.
All right. Shall we call that question on the substitute motion? Yes.
Vice Chair Matha?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
No.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, folks.
Can we take a break?
It's time for a break. Thank you, everybody. This was a, that was a contentious one, but we made some sense of it, and it's on its way to counsel, so everybody will have another bite at the apple. We're taking a break. It's 9:10 now. Can we make it five minutes? Is that, can we do that? All right, try to be back by 9:15 then.
Okay, everybody settle, coming back in. So we are now on to item eight A, which we interposed before the longer item, presumably This is just a scheduling matter, right? So do we, I guess we still need to take public comment and so forth? All right, do we need a staff report? We're just talking about next year's calendar.
I can give you one if you need one, but.
We don't need one, but were any of these for eight?
They are not for eight.
They're not.
How, oh, apparently we have one coming. We, during our approval of the agenda, we moved that up.
Okay, so this is for eight. Okay, all right, so we have one public comment. This is from Mr. Ryan Embry.
So my comment was that with the discussions with the staff and even the city manager, that the, the date of the meetings coincides with the day of the week. And then looking at your calendar, you're not meeting in the month of January as proposed on a Monday anyway. And for the month of February, if you look at your chart, only one of the meetings would be on a Monday. And the benefit would be for the staff and the public and you as commissioners to meet Tuesdays so that you would have the option of getting all the questions answered from city attorney, the planning director, the planner, the staff, on all the questions that you have, because they always, you know, I looked at the file back there, like five letters came in today on issues that you're meeting and hearing tonight. There will always be the day prior, in this case, it's the day of, because it's the same business day. So I would encourage you, since I think you vetted the idea that you could meet on Tuesdays, I think Skylar said you could meet Tuesdays, you preferred not to meet Wednesdays, that you give that benefit to staff, because you have the recruitment and retention, the staff and planners in particular are overworked, and this is a no-cost benefit. You've already decided that the packets would still be available the Friday, two weeks before you meet. So that's not a change. But to afford yourselves one more day of time to get all of the work done on the Monday, and then you have your meeting on the Tuesday as well, would really take the pressure off. And I don't know why you're not doing that for staff. It baffles me. It's a no-cost solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, presumably no Zoom commenters.
Yeah, there's no hands in Zoom.
Okay, so we're back up to the table, comments. Skylar.
So I, didn't we have, wasn't there an issue with something like going to a newspaper or something like that?
We voted it down last meeting, because several issues. One, one is you won't get any coverage in the newspaper. Number two, you're going to get the comments on Tuesday.
Exactly.
And.
I didn't see the difference in that either.
It, it just, it doesn't, it screws the, I don't see how it gives the staff any difference at all. And it screws us up, because we just, it's easier to get a real good study of it and try to just handle the last couple things on, on Monday and get it over with than to sit there and have them work all weekend to send us a whole bunch of comments on, on Tuesday. It just doesn't work. But we voted it down last time.
John, do you mind, because actually none of us are technically day-in, day-out staff members of the city, why don't we ask the staff how they feel about that? If that's what the concern is?
I agree.
And that may be a question for Richard, which is, in your crystal ball of perfection, would you prefer a meeting to happen on a Monday night or a Tuesday? Or would you, does it not matter?
The, an alternate night would be appreciated, and the reason being is that we already have city council on Monday nights. And many, many moons ago, we used to be Tuesday nights. However, the concern with Tuesday nights is that we would have to work with our attorney, our attorneys, because unfortunately, the attorneys that have experience with Malibu are not available on a Tuesday night. It'd be a Wednesday or Thursday. And like I said, it boils down to Tuesdays is bad for them, and just really Mondays is just to break up the fact that this department, and usually the, the guy is me, but it is other planners, it rotates through, but it becomes every Monday night, we have something.
My, my concern, my, I guess I'm not too particular, I can see the merits of either day or a Wednesday, but we've talked about this before, is this appropriate agenda item, Patrick, to decide or vote to impose a deadline for public comments? Like, for example, the coastal commission, what is it? It's either a week, what is it, a week or 10 days that they cut off comments?
Can I ask you a legal question also, along with that?
So if we, I'm sorry, so my, my question would be, could we just say we need to get comments by, you know, 5:00 PM on Friday, so that whatever day it is, we have time to?
People aren't going to do that.
Yeah, sure, so my.
Well, then we, then we can, we can ignore the comments and say, you didn't get them in.
My question may answer that. This is not before us tonight. Can we hear it?
That's my question.
Because we heard it last, last time and voted it down, and it was agendized then.
Correct, so, so this is just the, the calendar. So the topic of comments and reading the limited is, is, is probably not appropriate for tonight. Thank you for the assist, Vice Chair.
Okay, so on those lines, do you guys want to bring back a separate item that deals with the comments and putting a cutoff period? Yes or no?
Yes.
No, because we, we asked before and we got an answer, we can't do it.
From who?
From our attorney.
No, 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 so, so now I'm going to answer that question. So you, of course, can direct staff in the way that Ms. Evans greatly, you know, collects all of them, puts them in an email, and then sends them to you all. That is entirely within your discretion, should, you know, it be feasible by staff to say, hey, please do it by this time. You are correct, we cannot, you cannot pass something that says, anyone out there, you cannot comment on us, you cannot talk to us, you cannot email us.
But coastal commissions and Board of Supervisors, other, other bodies, they say, you know, basically, if you don't get it in by this time, we're not going to read it, we won't have time to read it.
And that's, once again, there's, there's a difference between you all saying, we received it and we are not going to look at it, versus you physically cannot send an email, we're going to block it or send it back.
Right, but it's, it's, it's an education thing to put in the notice that says, you know, please get your comments in by whatever, you know, 5:00 PM Friday, whatever, so.
But council considered this, they asked Trevor and they said no. Okay? And, and we voted last time, no. And we kept it at six.
Why would, why do you want?
We just passed the resolution three hours ago. We just, literally three hours ago, we passed the resolution.
We haven't talked about this issue, I don't know what you're saying.
I'm saying, we, we passed the, whatever it was called, it reorganized the rules, yeah.
And it said?
Six o'clock. And it said, Mondays, six o'clock, or 6:30, or whatever it said. Okay?
Rebecca's got a hand.
Rebecca.
Bring some order to this, please.
I don't know how much order I'm bringing, but as a point of clarification, the resolution that was just brought to you and was adopted this evening was simply for striking the paragraph regarding the chair assignments. It did not adjust the time of the meetings. There has been significant comment since our discussion on that topic, that it might prove confusing to the public to have it so close to the meeting time, but slightly different, that city council follows. You expressed some concern about the distance that you're driving in comparison to the others.
There was miles.
So that was not incorporated in what was brought to you this evening.
So just to be clear, the agreement thus far is that we're staying at 6:30?
At, at this point, what was adopted today, 6:30.
We're staying 6:30 on Monday with this calendar, unless we change it.
On Monday. If you choose to look at other days, I'll be honest, I did previously provide you with a Wednesday, Thursday calendar, but I didn't put them in my back pocket for tonight. I went with today and in my back pocket a Tuesday, because I, those were the only ones I had conversations about.
Okay.
There are some additional concerns with meeting on a Wednesday or Thursday in terms of having difficulties keeping the meetings to the first and third weeks, because once you get past Tuesday, those sometimes overlap with city council weeks.
Got it.
So.
Go ahead.
I lost my train of thought, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to throw another monkey wrench in it, because you're going to say you threw a monkey wrench in it, but I found the last four or five weeks to be really hard, okay? At Christmas, when staff is going to leave, a couple days later, and we get all this stuff jammed in, that is, you know, we work for nothing, and, and I actually put in hours. It's really hard to have all these meetings at Christmas, when your family rolls in and you got to get stuff done before.
So your motion is to scratch the end of the December 16th.
If the staff can get a whole week off, we can get a day off.
Do we have appetite to scratch the last December, end of the year?
No.
What, what date is it on the calendar now?
16th.
16th.
For clarification, the planning commission canceled their January 2nd meeting as a winter holiday break, and we do have a substantial number of items scheduled for January 16th hearings.
No, we're, we're talking about like a year from now.
We're, well, right now, I believe, planning commissioner, I, I'm, I could be wrong. Perhaps Vice Chair Mazza meant a year out, but what we are considering tonight is the 2024 calendar. So that would be this January 16th, which would continue a significant number of items too.
You're talking about December.
I want to scratch December 16th, 2024.
A year from now.
She's talking about three weeks from now.
Yeah, so.
So I, I don't have an issue with taking that meeting off, but what I think it is important for us to do is to either stick another meeting in July, when we, you're taking that, that Monday off for the, around July 4th, or to do another meeting somewhere in here in one of the months where we have the extra week. Only if that's what the staff requires.
And, and.
That's what the, that's what the public requires, and we need to meet and go over something. I'm just, and I know that we don't have that date specified right now, but this still allows us the flexibility to do that if we need to.
That's something we can vote on anyway, as it comes along.
See, we have, we've had, what, three special meetings this year? Extra?
Yeah.
Because they got behind? Well, I don't have any problem with that. So if you want to schedule an extra meeting, we do it on the fly.
I would say let's not, let's not worry about extra meetings, those are ad hoc, we can decide them when and if we need them.
Well, he was talking about extra meetings.
Okay, Drew.
I was going to say, overall, I think we have something that we should just accept, and if we want to modify it down the road by power outage or whatever it's going to be, we'll be doing that.
Right. I, I have one, okay, my, what, what, the train that I lost, that I have back, is, in the absolutely perfect super world, what would you like? What works best? Monday, Tuesday?
Earlier.
Talking staff.
Yeah, they want earlier.
Talk to the planning director's staff.
I'm talking, well, I guess collectively, if you.
Rebecca, Rebecca, you're the one that puts us together, so as I did last time, I'm asking you, which, what, I know the boss spoke, but what about you? What about you?
I would like Richard to have what he wants.
I would like to have attorneys who know what we're all about, too. And remember, that's part of the decision. He said you cannot have a city attorney with experience in Malibu on Tuesday.
Yeah, I, I did hear that.
Okay, so if we're going to have amateurs come in here, we're going to have more appeals.
Is that, that's accurate, Patrick? We, we have no attorney on Tuesday?
Well, no, of course, best best in Krieger, we have a, a deep bench. If, but, you know, if you like looking down in either seeing Trevor's face or my face here, Tuesdays are very tough. We serve a city attorney in numerous other jurisdictions, and I'm sure as Don Schmitz can, can attest, Tuesdays is kind of the very popular night for, for other, other jurisdictions.
So we wouldn't get anybody prettier, or?
I mean, of course you would, but yes, so, yeah.
Sorry, I will strike that from the record.
Yeah.
All right, so I guess I'm not hearing too much.
I'm going to make a motion to approve it, deleting December 16th.
I have one audible call in that, on all this, which is, if there's any appetite, I would prefer to change January 16th to the 17th, because I already have an appointment in Los Angeles at 6:00 PM on that day. So, so if, if we don't change it, you'll get John running that meeting.
As a point of clarification, the city council trumps us, and they've already booked the 17th for their special meeting.
Well, and I can see if I can change my point, you know, I, I, well, I'll, I'll see what I can do.
I'll second John's motion.
Okay. Go ahead.
Roll call.
So for clarification, your motion is to approve the calendar with the exception of eliminating the December 16th, 2024 meeting?
That is correct.
Is that okay?
I'm just going to add the amendment that I think we should keep this schedule as is, and we should just put a note in there that in the beginning of November, based on the schedule, we're going to have the discussion as to whether or not we're going to cancel that December meeting. Because I just see us being in a situation where we need to have a meeting, and we're just kicking everything else down the road, and I think that's foolish.
Can we mark it as optional?
While we have a motion, I don't accept the amendment. So can we take a vote?
We can, we can absolutely do that. And I will also, just as a clarification, in our planning long range, anytime we have something unique that is going to be heard on a future date, I do have notes at the bottom of the planning commission long range page that trigger me to add things as meetings come forward, like the reorganization. The current vote will be on the adoption of the 2024 calendar of meetings on a Monday at 6:30 PM, with canceled meetings on July 1st, January 2nd, and December 16th.
Correct.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Let's get on.
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Nope.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, with that, we are now on to item 5C. Oh, you're out of here. All right. Good evening. Don't forget what?
Lion Heron.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
He does not, this is a, this is a comment line now.
Maybe I should just say this right off before I even read the item? Do I read the item? Okay, so we're looking at item 5C. Coastal development permit amendment number 20-068, site plan review number 21-009, demolition permit number 20-028, located at 6734 Zumeras Drive, within the appealable zone. I should say something now, right? Right? Okay, so what is all this, this is from?
This is Smith's hesitation. Do you, do you guys need one? We have an extra? Okay.
For, for the record here, I've been asked by the applicant, they suggested I recuse myself. That suggestion is based on their misapprehension of some email I sent regarding commission procedure. It was in no way about the merits of the current application whatsoever. I'm fully capable of deliberating and voting on this application fairly, there's no question. Recusal is not warranted. So.
And so Chair Hill, if I may just add two brief things, like all allegations of bias, our office, the city attorney office that is, takes them very seriously. I'm not going to go point by point through that correspondence that Chair Hill mentioned, I'll just say two things briefly. First, the planning commissioners do not have city-issued email addresses. Thus, the use of an email address outside of a city-issued one is a matter of necessity, not obfuscation. And then second, like all claims of bias, the city attorney's office extensively spoke with, with, with Chair Hill about the issue. The ultimate decision, of course, on recu, on recusal rests with him. I'm confident that the chair has been properly informed on the various issues and legal arguments pertaining to the bias issue, and his decision to participate is one that was made by him with all the facts and arguments before him. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, and to clarify, the, the address, the email I used is my de facto city email. We don't have an official city one, but I have one dedicated to city use, that's what I used. Okay.
Before we start, can I ask a question of the staff, the city attorney?
On this, on this point, or some?
No, on, on this, the staff report.
All right, go ahead.
Usually, well, this is a weird one, because it went to city council without us, but usually when we have a, a, an item that comes back to us, it's the same as we saw presented to us. And apparently, this one is different. So isn't that a new application? And, or don't we have to consider the one we first got? Because it's still the same, same permit number and all that kind of stuff. Can the city council come back and say, yeah, 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 study it this way, instead of the way you got it?
I mean, so Vice Chair Mazza, I'm sure, I mean, there's project modifications that, that occur all the time. The, the, the previous one, I believe it was, it was changed to CV1. The applicant wanted CV2.
No, I understand that. But that wasn't, that was the same that was presented the prior time. I'm saying, an application came to us, we heard it, it went to city council, it changed, it's coming back to us, changed.
Correct. I am, I am confident that you can hear the item tonight as, as presented. If there is confusion or further inquiry into the modifications, that is, of course, your prerogative to explore those and ask questions, but as presented tonight, I'm confident that you guys can hear and make a decision, should you so choose.
But is that a normal procedure, or is that just this one?
So, so I can, I can assure you that this, this item, there has been nothing normal about it, starting, starting from the two-two tie, going back up to the city council, and then coming back down. So like my answer before you, I would, I would take this item as a specific entity before you and not concern yourself with any future precedential value, only because of the unique procedural aspect that we faced.
Okay, the second question is, as I look at this, the two-two ties are relevant, it's not our, we look at planning items, we don't decide legal issues. And so this is not pertinent for us to decide whether a tie is this or a tie is that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Should we do disclosures, or do we staff report first?
Did you do?
Dennis?
I just talked to Mr. Smith, just said we're all going to be here.
I watched the council hearing of October 23rd at, and a resident sent me an article in the Santa Monica Mirror about earthquake faults and how the Palisverdes Fault, sister of the Malibu Fault, has just been upgraded from a 7.1 maximum hypothetical Richter to a 7.8 by Harvard geologists, published on, in October 2023. The significance of that, I don't know, but there has been discussion about faults already, so that, that was maybe new news. John?
Well, I just learned that I'm going to die on a 7.8 fault, because I live in a flimsy old house, and my only disclosure is I live on the same street, but I'm more than 500 feet away, and I've lived there for 34 years.
And we made disclosures on the previous item, I think those are probably all still valid. Also, Drew, have you watched the, the prior hearing on the video?
Yes, I've watched the city council, I had the March Planning Commission hearing.
Good. And any other disclosure?
I met with the applicant and Mr. Smith a week ago Monday, that's Monday, and that's it.
All right, well, then, in that case, Tyler Eaton, you are the man of the hour. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Hill, members of the planning commission. So as mentioned before, the next item tonight is a proposal to demolish the existing single-family residence that currently exists, and construct a new single-family residence, second unit and associated development. This project is located in the Point Dune neighborhood, it's east of Zumeras Drive. The project is visible from Paradise Cove Beach, but it is anticipated to blend in with the surrounding development and not cause any impacts to public scenic resources. So long description here of the proposed work is, like I mentioned, the demolition of the existing single-family residence, construction of a new 5,860 square foot single-family residence with a 510 square foot attached garage, a 986 square foot basement. There is a 471 square foot second unit with its own 462 square foot detached garage, there's a permeable driveway, some visually permeable fences and vehicular gates at the front, some side yard, six-foot walls, swimming pool, two spas, new landscaping, 14,000-plus square feet of impermeable surfaces, open-air garden trellises, water features, retaining walls, and an onsite wastewater treatment system. The project also is proposing a site plan review to go over 18 feet, up to 24 with a flat roof. So here you see the proposed site plan. The main residence sits to the east, and the second unit sits to the west. Like I mentioned, includes its own detached garage, courtyard, and spa. Here's the proposed slope analysis. Project was designed to avoid 4:1 slopes, which are protected by Chapter 4 of the LIP for the Point Dune neighborhood. 4:1 slopes are depicted in yellow here, east of the property. The project proposes a site plan review for height above 18 feet, up to 24 with a flat roof. Areas proposed to be over 18 feet are depicted in red here. There are portions of the residence that will be seen within neighbors' protected views, but those portions of the home within those views are at 18 feet or below. Second unit will be a maximum 12 feet. So in 2022, staff received some concerns about possibly a view corridor requirement. The applicant was able to demonstrate that the site would not provide views of the ocean via view corridor, mostly because Paradise Cove Mobile Home Park sits at approximately the same grade as the subject site, and views are visible through this site diagonally, but a contiguous view corridor would not provide the public benefit that is intended by the chapter. There's also some concerns regarding private view impacts. The property, two houses to the north at 6716 Zumeras Drive, sent in correspondence. There was a portion of the pool deck that was within their view. The project has since been revised, and this portion has been eliminated. The neighbor has since submitted correspondence in support of the revised. The neighbor has since submitted correspondence, uh, in support of the revised project. There's another, uh, PVD concern. Um, in twenty twenty two, staff went out and documented a PVD, uh, primary view determination at the, the adjacent neighbor to the north. Um, there were some areas that blocked blue water, but all areas, uh, were at eighteen feet or below, uh, and those, those, uh, sub, those parts of the, um, home are not protected by the MMC. Um, this property has since become into new ownership and the new owners have submitted correspondence in support of the project. There were multiple neighbors that brought up, uh, concerns regarding the stream or a potential stream, I should say, at the toe of the slope, uh, to the east of the property. The LIP provides that, uh, you need to, you need to provide a hundred foot buffer between the, um, riparian habitat and the development. Um, but in the Point Doom area, all development, uh, is designed, um, or shall be designed to avoid encroachment onto four to one slopes, which is done for this project, and, uh, no additional ESHA requirements were necessary. So I think it was mentioned earlier in the meeting, but, uh, city hall will be closed next week for the winter closure. So if a decision is rendered tonight on this item, the appeal period will end on January eighth, twenty twenty four, and this language was added to the resolution for tonight. So with that, staff recommends adoption of resolution twenty three sixty, and we're available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Um, so we have some speaker slips. We have an applicant, uh, Don Schmitz, who is gonna want to get up. And you know the drill about reserving time and so forth. What's your pleasure?
Well, I'm going to, uh, reserve time for rebuttal. I'll get through this first part. We'll get a clear break. I hope to get the first part done within ten minutes' time.
And let's see, to be clear, uh, Matthew Hinks is part of your party, right?
Counsel's here, uh, to answer questions and we'll see if we need him for rebuttal.
Okay. And then it looks to me like everybody else is, okay, okay. Great.
Okay. Uh, where's my clock? Is it? Oh, there it is. I've only been up here two million times. All right. So, uh, sorry for that. Don Schmitz, on behalf of the applicant, thank you for your attention, uh, tonight again, uh, commissioners. This project has been agendized six times with six staff reports, all recommending approval. The reason all those staff reports have recommended approval over and over is because the project completely and concisely complies with the local coastal program and the municipal code. The maximum front yard setback in the city of Malibu is sixty five feet. We're providing a hundred and forty two foot front yard setback. And the second story, the twenty four foot second story will be set back three hundred and sixty feet from the street. The proposed view from the development from the street, as you can see, is, how would you characterize it? Demure. It's not gonna be a looming structure which is gonna have impacts to, uh, people going along the private street. The property is highly disturbed. As you all know, the house was constructed in nineteen forty nine, and from literally one end to the other, it has been completely disturbed. All development is on slopes flatter than four to one. This was verified in the submittal application and confirmed by staff by not only one surveyor, but we had it re-surveyed again by peak surveys who have documented there is no development on slopes deeper than four to one, including the fire department access around the footprint of the development, which has, of course, been approved by LA County Fire Department. Accordingly, the staff report specifies, as it pertains to ESHA, that all the proposed development will be cited on slopes to avoid, uh, on areas to avoid the twenty five percent slopes and steeper consistent with LIP chapter four. There is no ESHA that's involved with this property despite the dubious assertions of opponents. You can see the ESHA maps here from the LCP. We are nowhere near any sort of ESHA. As properly stated in the staff report, the twenty, the four to one slopes is the constraint within Point Doom to protect ESHA areas. Uh, there just simply isn't ESHA in this area of Point Doom. It's not applicable, but LIP section four point six point one A states that all development in other areas outside of Point Doom must be set back a hundred feet from a riparian ESHA. There's overlapping fuel modification for this, this entire neighborhood. This new home will not propose any new fuel modification in an area that has not already been fuel modified for over half of a century. And that being said, the house itself is set back two hundred and twenty six feet from the riparian area at the bottom of the canyon. So even if it wasn't in Point Doom, this project would be demonstrably consistent with the setback standards for a stream ESHA. And accordingly, the city biologist has approved the project and said that it can proceed forward. What about the assertion that this is a coastal bluff edge? Well, the chapter two of the LCP is very, uh, clear in regards to what constitutes a coastal bluff and what is just a canyon wall. And you've got the five hundred foot lengths and the, the right angles here, and the prevailing coastal bluff line has been demonstrated to the satisfaction of the planning staff and public works. Uh, and it just simply is the fact that this canyon is not a coastal bluff. The bluff termini angle bisected is completely consistent with chapter two. It's just not a coastal bluff. So accordingly, the LIP chapter ten sections do not apply, uh, to this project in any way, shape or form, despite those who are trying to assert to the contrary. The project has been extensively reviewed, uh, by the geology department and has received approvals. What about ocean views? LIP section six point five E, as it pertains to ocean views, we were required, this was very atypical for this street, but we were required to do an analysis as it pertain to public views across the property. The corridor exhibit was something that was already touched on by staff, but Zumeres Road is a hundred and seven point nine feet. The structures across, uh, the way in Paradise Cove are a hundred and twelve and a half feet. This is not an irregularly shaped lot. This is just a, a perfect rectangle, if you will. That's important because six point five E two states on irregularly shaped lots, the planning manager shall determine which side yards shall constitute the view corridor in order to maximize public views. If it's not an irregularly shaped lot, the, the applicant gets to decide which side yard, and that does mean side yard. Any concepts or discussions about some unique diagonal view corridor, if you're halfway into the property and looking across at an angles, simply not the law. That is not the rule. And so the view corridor, twenty percent, uh, wide view corridor on the northerly side of the property would provide you a beautiful view of the back of the Paradise Cove homes, but not the ocean. The project will not have any impacts on public views, and these findings are in your staff report, all six of them. It complies with the two thirds rule. Uh, we could have a three thousand one hundred and ninety nine square foot second story. We're doing one thousand five hundred and seventy two square foot. Within your subjective determination is whether or not the site plan review would constitute something inconsistent with the neighborhood character. It clearly doesn't. Uh, nineteen of the, uh, structures, the twenty seven structures within a five hundred foot radius are taller than eighteen foot. Um, you are all familiar with this fact. There is a subject property. You can see the surrounding development is predominantly over eighteen foot. This is sixty seven fifty four Zumeres, very close by. This one's very important, six seven one six Zumeres, because the city approved it with a full two thirds second story. And this is just two houses, uh, adjacent to this one. So clearly the findings can be made as it pertains to the, uh, the site plan review being consistent with neighborhood character. Uh, the, uh, primary view issue has been touched on by staff. Six seven zero six had absolutely no primary view issues, couldn't see across it. Six seven one six, uh, they were asserting, uh, some concerns over this. However, no part of the project visible from that property was over eighteen feet. Nonetheless, we eliminated a portion of this project, and Commissioner Maza, you know very well, the projects are modified regularly in the hearing rooms and going through the process, and that's entirely appropriate. And in fact, we have done so. We eliminated a very important part of this project to assuage the concerns of our neighbors, the Zicklins. And accordingly, they have now written and stated that they have dropped their opposition to the application. We think we should get a little extra credit for that because this commission and the council very often admonishes applicants to try and work with their neighbors, and we have done so. Additionally, we have met with, uh, our neighbor at six seven two eight Zumeres. We were not having, uh, a primary view impact for any portion of the development over eighteen foot. Nonetheless, we met with the owner, had a number of conversations, and he has written a support letter that he has no objection to Mr. Ross's project as well. It will not have an, uh, an adverse impact on any primary views. That's what the staff report states. That's what the evidence clearly shows. So with that, we'll stop the clock at seven and a half minutes, uh, because I do suspect that there'll be some, uh, additional testimony. We'd like to retain that time for rebuttal.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schmitz. With that, we go to other public comment, and let's see, we have a, um, a, a representative coming up to, uh, I guess it's Janetta Giorino? Is that correct? Okay. And you should have six minutes if we have in the room Joe Drummond, Ryan Embry and Pat Healy, and I see them out there. So that is confirmed, and I have their speaker slips. So you have six minutes. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much to the chair and to the commission. It's a pleasure to be before you. My name is Janetta Jovenco. I'm an attorney with Richards Watson Gershon here this evening, representing the Gil Friesen Trust on behalf of Janet Friesen, owner of the property, uh, located next to this one at six seven four four Zumeres. Um, we continue to have concerns regarding this project as currently proposed and object to the planning commission approving it in its current form. Um, I appreciated the presentation by the applicant. It touched on several of the points that I would like to be addressing this evening as well. Um, first, let me start by saying I understand and agree that many times revisions to a project occur after the initial application has been made. Um, I'm familiar with that based on my own practice. However, I believe one of the fundamental issues is that it needs to be clear that all of the revisions that have been made have been adequately analyzed and addressed pursuant to the requirements for staff analysis. And I don't believe that, as currently demonstrated in the staff report or the resolution, uh, that is proposed for the planning commission, that it is clear that staff has, um, I don't want to say they haven't reviewed it, but that they have confirmed the, uh, revisions do not present any issues. And I think that's a fundamental piece of information that's required in order for the commission to be able to make a decision. I do not believe that the commission can properly make the findings that are required pursuant to the local coastal program. One of the critical findings is that the, uh, project complies with the LCP and also that it is the least damaging alternative. I do not believe that either of those findings can be made based on the information that's been presented or that is included in the proposed, uh, uh, resolution for the planning commission's consideration. One of the fundamental issues is the slope and whether it is a four to one or whether there is a portion, um, where it, the portion of the project that is going to intrude on a slope that is greater than four to one. Uh, we have a, a, uh, geologist who I believe is on Zoom this evening, Mark Johnson, who wrote a portion of the LCP, um, who is concerns that have been expressed regarding the grade of the slope and that the project does in fact encroach onto a slope that is greater than twenty five percent. Therefore, the findings cannot be made. In addition, there is concern regarding ESHA. We have submitted, uh, information from a sort of, excuse me, from a senior ecologist, Edith Reed, who has also expressed concerns that ESHA potentially exists on the project site and therefore has implications for this, under your own LCP, of course. Um, and contrary to, I, what I believe was the suggestion from the applicant that has only mapped ESHA that is sufficient, ESHA is ESHA that deserves to be and is required to be considered and protected even if it is not shown on the city map. Um, this issue has become, uh, of greater concern recently, and the conclusion that more analysis is needed to demonstrate whether biological resources are impacted, whether there is an issue with the slope with the grade, um, is highlighted by an appeal that occurred recently of a project down the road on Zumeres where the coastal commission staff was poised to recommend on the appeal that they would find substantial issue and, uh, because of the project's potential encroachment on four to one or steeper slopes and therefore would require a redesign of the project. It's my understanding that the project has since been withdrawn or deferred for further consideration, but that simply highlights that additional analysis and information is needed and that the project cannot be approved if it does not demonstrate that it complies with provisions of the local coastal program. There are other issues as well regarding the view corridor. I understand that the applicant has submitted the analysis. I do not believe that that has been sufficiently vetted in order to demonstrate the view corridor issues have been addressed, that views have been, uh, sufficiently demonstrated not to be impacted by the project. Um, and on the whole, I would simply say the project is designed, there are too many outstanding questions based on the information and the technical reports submitted by experts suggesting that additional information is needed or that some redesign is necessary to ensure that the project will comply with provisions of the local coastal program. So with that, I would respectfully request that the commission, uh, not approve the project this evening and instead request additional information or work with the applicant for, uh, redesign of the project to address issues particularly relating to the slope. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jovenco, and apologies for pronouncing your name wrong. Um, do we have anybody on Zoom?
There are three hands. First one here from Larry Weiner.
Okay. Mr. Weiner, are you there? Can we hear you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Larry Weiner. I'm with Richards Watson Gershon, and we, I'm representing the trust on behalf of Janet Friesen. A bit of background on me, I'm the former city attorney of Westlake Village, former city attorney of Hidden Hills, and I have been the city attorney for Beverly Hills for the last twenty five years. Um, I'm here this evening to monitor these proceedings and ensure that the proper procedure is followed. I understand that previously the planning commission did not take action and instead merely forwarded this matter to the city council for the city council to address. I also understand that the city council declined to do so and returned the matter to the planning commission for a decision. As you are no doubt aware, and as the city council pointed out, a two, two vote does not result in any action by the planning commission. The planning commission can only take action through a majority vote, as provided in Roberts' Rules of Order, which are adopted through your rules of procedure. Also, in conjunction with any decision, due process requires that the planning commission make findings. And findings, again, as you are no doubt aware, trace your decision from the frac, from the facts presented to the commission to the ultimate decision required by your municipal code. And due process requires these findings in part so that a court, or in this case perhaps the city council, can understand how the commission reached its decision. So, again, if there is a two, two vote this evening, then I believe it would be appropriate for this development to be returned to the applicant to make whatever changes are necessary to achieve majority support and to make findings. And I thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We have two more?
Yeah. Uh, Edith Reed.
Edith Reed, can we hear you? Welcome.
Hello. Can you hear me now?
We can, yes. Go ahead.
Okay. I had submitted a letter, uh, to the council back in October, uh, highlighting some issues related to biology, and I'd like to just, uh, briefly run through that letter now because the issues, um, are still, uh, relevant. Um, I'm a biologist who's conducted numerous biological inventories and assessments for property owners in the city of Malibu for over a decade. It was brought to my attention that the city staff has determined that the demolition and development project proposed here is categorically exempt from CEQA and is proposing concurrence in this determination. But based on my re, my review of background information and my visit to the neighbor's property, Janet Friesen, on, in September, where I could view the story polls, I can't find any evidence that justifies a categorical exemption from CEQA. On the contrary, I think it's an exception to the exemption that exists pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, section fifteen, three hundred point two. Um, and therefore the project cannot proceed without some level of environmental review. I've provided, in this letter, I provided an aerial photo and topographic map, um, showing that the property is located next- that the property is located next to a natural creek. This creek is not shown as ESHA on city maps, but in my professional opinion and based on my review of the site, it might still qualify as such. But to my knowledge, no biological inventory assessment has been conducted to confirm or evaluate this and whether protected native trees could be impacted by the project even if indirectly. So I think use of a CEQA exemption here is also not applicable because I did do a survey up the street at 6551 Zumares Drive, above a drainage called Walnut Canyon that was not shown on city maps as ESHA. But nevertheless, it turned out to potentially qualify as such, and city staff recognized this and required the property owner to have a biological study completed. So that the city recognizes that ESHA might be present in this location supports a conclusion and an exception to the use of a CEQA exemption applies here. So the purpose is not really to stop the project entirely, but to ensure that it avoids or at least minimizes resource impact. So my recommendation is that resolution not be adopted at this time and that the appropriate biological studies be conducted to ensure that Malibu's natural resources continue to be protected as required under the LCP, LIP. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reed. And finally?
Mark Johnson.
Mark Johnson. Can we hear you?
How's that?
A little bit quiet, but we can hear you.
Okay. I'll try to speak more clearly then. May I have the first slide, please? Good evening, Chair Hill Commissioners. Next slide, please. There are three geologic issues with proposed project. The possible presence of a fault, the slope stability and future marine erosion related to sea level rise, and three that the project encroaches into steep slopes. Turning first to the issue of a fault, boring show an abrupt increase in thickness of the upper rock unit identified as older alluvium. The project geologist dismisses this as a depositional feature, stating if the change in older alluvium thickness is related to fault displacement, the fault is not zoned active and is therefore irrelevant. I disagree. It's exactly this kind of anomaly by which faults are identified. Turning to slope retreat, one expects a slope to change over time due to erosion and for the bluff edge to retreat. To erosional processes acting today, one must add any future marine erosion related to sea level rise. Finally, the LCP states that, quote, "In the Point Doom area, new development shall be designed to avoid encroachment on slopes of 25% grade or steeper," end quote. Next slide, please. This is the second survey submitted by the applicant. The first, conducted by land and air surveying, showed the proposed roof, pool, jacuzzi, and walkways overlapping those areas of greater than 25% slope. I have a slide available if the Commission would like to see it after this. In contrast, this survey, conducted by Peak Survey, shows no development within areas mapped as greater than 25%. I don't know what data these slopes calculations are based on nor how the polygons on the map were derived. Without the raw data, I can't determine the exact degree of encroachment, but encroach they do. In fact, the slope varies in steepness. Despite the minor variation shown on this map, the overall slope looks like, next slide, please. This is a topographic crop section, showing the geology as well. The top of the slope is at elevation 100 feet and the bottom is at elevation 36 feet. So taking the slope as a whole, the horizontal difference between these points is 238 feet. So the rise over the run is 64 over 238 feet, and the overall slope steepness is 3.7 to 1, or 27%. Last slide, please. Thus, the project is inconsistent with the LCP because if, one, there may be a fault at the site, so the project does not assure stability as required by LCP Sections 9.4 and 10.4. Two, slope retreat is not evaluated, so the stability is not assured for the next 100 years as required, again, by Sections 9.4 and 10.4. This is especially important due to the continued sea level rise.
All right. Mr. Johnson, sorry, but your time is up. Oh, I'm sorry. You have six seconds left. Oh, it went back. Okay. Right. Thank you for that. And now we're back to the applicant for rebuttal.
And Don, you have seven minutes and 23 seconds.
Thank you. Could you, before you begin the clock, Rebecca, would you please put it on Slide 55? I've learned. Yeah, Slide 55. It's the LCP compliance table. Well, that's not, there we go. Okay, you can start the clock. Again, for the record, Don Schmitz, on behalf of the applicant, yes, this project meets all the applicable codes of the local coastal program. And if the opposing council had bothered to read the public record, they would see that not only have the revised plans been reviewed by the planning staff as was specified in the staff report, they would also see that on November 8th, each and every department within the city of Malibu looked at those revised plans and found them to be consistent with the various criteria, whether it be geology, health department, biology, et cetera, et cetera, every single one of them. This project has been reviewed by every department, including the revised plans, and has been approved. The project went through three rounds of geology originally, and pursuant to the aspersions that Mr. Johnson was throwing at it at the last hearing, we did supplemental analysis, not only from the original consulting geologists, but also land phases, and have the concurrence of the city geologists that the assertions of Mr. Johnson are just factually not correct. Sea level rise, a concern? This is something that Mr. Johnson's actually put forward with a straight face. With 6.6 feet of sea level rise, according to the city of Malibu's recent study, you can see that little area there, little blue at the bottom of the canyon. This canyon will never be subject to sea level rise wave action, even in the most apocalyptic scenarios. And NOAA utilizing AFIT still shows it far, far removed from the toe of this property in the bottom of the canyon. It's silly. It will never be subject to wave action, and it's indicative of people that are willing to say and do whatever they can to try and keep this application from moving forward. And the findings of the supplemental analysis say that, in fact, even with 100 years of potential sea level rise, it's nowhere close. Edith Reed is a biologist. She's not a CEQA expert. I am a CEQA expert. Our attorney's a CEQA expert. Your planning director's a CEQA expert. The city attorney are CEQA experts. And her assertions as it pertains to 1530.2 of CEQA are just not supportable at any level, not the least of which is the fact that there will be no additional fuel modification from this house. Why is that not something which is being noted in the opposing group's testimony to this Planning Commission? There will be no additional fuel modification impacts whatsoever, and the house itself is setback over double what stream setbacks would be required anyplace else. And yes, in fact, the LCP specifies that this drainage is not dealt with as an ESHA on Point Doom. And that's exactly what the staff report says, and that's exactly what the biologist for the city has said as well. The TDSF pursuant to this modification that we made to the project to try and address the neighbor's concerns has reduced slightly the TDSF for the project. The site plan review remains in compliance with a two-thirds rule. And in fact, as you can see right here, we are well under what is permissible for the second story. And we actually increased the rear yard setback from the canyon from 139.5 feet to 150 feet by eliminating that beautiful bedroom that we had there on the northeasterly corner of the project. There is no question that the second story is consistent with the neighborhood character, overwhelmingly consistent. The entire property is highly developed and disturbed. The proposed development is sited on slopes which are flatter than four to one. Mr. Johnson's assertion that the original survey from land and air showed it being over four to one slope, steeper than, is just not true. There was an original survey where there were some bushes out there. Staff to support the design had us go out and take a look at that and get very detailed on the survey. Both surveyors concur that no development is proposed on slopes steeper than four to one. Dr. Johnson, he shows you a cross-section going all the way through the property, averages it out, he's never been to the property, and tells you that you need to overturn the determination of the two licensed surveyors that have been working in this area for decades and has been reviewed by your staff. That's just not supportable. You have a test for substantial credible evidence, and we have provided substantial credible evidence that has been reviewed ad nauseam by every department within the city as well as the planning department. The proposed project does not have significant impacts of scenic resources or scenic areas. It cannot be seen from a scenic road. You can see it from the beach, along with all the other two-story structures on there that have been approved either by the California Coastal Commission or by the city of Malibu. We are completely consistent with the neighborhood character, and the staff report is correct in stating that there is no significant impacts of scenic resources or scenic areas. There is no portion of the development over 18 feet which is impacting primary views. And the neighbors that were originally opposing the project have written you support letters now. How often does that happen? You guys have all been doing this for a while, except for Commissioner Leonard, but he's been watching these for a long time. It's very rare where you have a controversy of somebody asserting a primary view where we are able to work it out. And even if we are under 18 feet, there's usually still a war. Nobody is claiming a primary view impact on this application which is before you. There's no new fuel modification which is proposed, none. There's no native trees which are impacted by this project, zero. There is no impact to environmentally sensitive habitat areas at all. The project is demonstrably consistent with the municipal code and the local coastal program. We understand our neighbor doesn't want us to build this house. We understand our neighbor has hired multiple attorneys, biologists, geologists, whoever she can throw at us to try and keep this application from moving forward. This is the sixth time that we have been scheduled with a staff report recommending approval. There has to come a time eventually where you listen to the substantial credible evidence and the unbiased third-party professionals that the city hires to review all these plans and reports. They have done so. They have given us a clean bill of health. They have recommended approval now for the sixth time, and we urge this Commission to please give these people the approval they deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Schmitz. I believe that concludes the public comment portion of this hearing, so we now return to the Commissioner's dais here. Just as a quick threshold question for clarity, for Patrick, the Commission's decision, we heard two different things. They said that they were returning this to us or that this remained with us?
So at least my understanding, and you may, I did not watch the entirety of the City Council.
I don't know if it matters.
Yeah. So this was remanded back down to the Planning Commission for a decision?
Okay. Because I thought they said it remained with us, not that it was being...
And so, once again, is there a substantive issue that you...
Somebody might care. No, I, no. All right. So questions, comments, observations?
No.
John?
These are for staff. Apparently, and I may be considering beachfront houses, but the statement was made that you get to pick your side yard setback and you can put it all on one side. Is that correct? I thought you had to split it and you had to be at least five feet from the...
View corridor.
Well, yeah, view corridor, well, view corridor side yard setback. Is there a reason why you can put it all on one side? Is that in the code?
The, yes. The code originally requires the view corridor, if you look at the first, let me start over. If you look at the first LCP that the city had, it required that the view corridor be 20% of the lot frontage, and it was on one side. The city then processed an amendment to allow on lots less than 50%, and this is back in...
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet. I think '06, '05. We processed an amendment that if your lot was less than 50 feet, you could split the view corridor up to be 10% on each side for a cumulative 20. So the splitting is on lots less than 50 feet wide, the frontage. And then when your lot's more than 50 feet, you then place the view corridor on one side. And yes, the applicant does get to pick the side. The code only mandates that the director establish the view corridor on irregularly shaped lots.
Word I needed to know, but thank you.
Okay, let's, let's, before we move on to another issue, let's try to take this one issue at a time and not keep bouncing around, so.
That's, I'm done with that one.
Okay. So we're, but talking about view corridors, I have a comment or a question, really.
Okay.
Staff, Mr. Schmitz made the representation that if it's an irregularly shaped lot, you get to decide where the corridor goes, implying in his view that if it's a more straightforward shaped lot, that they get to decide which side it goes. I don't, is that a necessary conclusion or is it that if it's a more straightforward shaped lot, it could go on either side and who decides is up for discussion?
The code does not identify that the director decide or the city decide on a regular shaped lot. It's, so last week, for example, my staff brought me one that had a unique frontage where a lot of the lot was actually behind somebody else's lot. And in those cases, the code is specific because it states, as Mr. Schmitz pointed out, he did read you the code, on an irregularly shaped lot, the planning manager renders a decision on what is the view corridor.
So, okay, because on this site, when we visited it, I observed that were the vegetation not there on the south side of the lot? I'm 99% sure that I could see through and see a little piece of the ocean south of the Mobile Home Park. And I could confirm that by looking at it from different angles, other sides of the bushes, and interpolating what I could see through the thing. So, and it confused me that in the hearing to council, Mr. Schmitz only talked about the north side view corridor and didn't even address the potential south side corridor. But then also to council, and again, this is all a question for you, a council member, this is in our text, in our report, council member asked you, is the owner developer required to remove existing vegetation that is in that view corridor? And you replied, correct, no vegetation and no portion of the structure by road grade will be allowed in a view corridor other than visually permeable fencing low-growing vegetation. So since we're basically starting from scratch on this lot, is it, is it appropriate to say that the vegetation is also from scratch or is there, do we have to in some way respect the vegetation that's there?
This is your opportunity, this is going to be a clean site, if you will, to be brought into conformance. Staff is aware of what you're talking about, and that is why we asked the applicant to provide us the exhibit that's included in your packet, is because we believe that there was a view there and went back and forth with many months. And based on the submitted materials and further investigation by site visits, it appears, and our conclusion on this was that what you're actually doing is looking through the neighboring lot to the south to get that view. So if you were to stand at the front of the property, look down the property, not at an angle across the property, but go to that south property line and look across, you would actually be looking at the Mobile Home Park if the neighbor, you know, if the neighbor had a wall... had a wall there or their landscaping continues to grow, that would end up actually blocking the view. So the view is actually on the neighboring property and not this one.
You said there was an exhibit that showed how this was not a corridor? I don't recall seeing that.
Yeah, it's in the packet, I can also pull it up.
If there's a slide, maybe.
Yeah.
You could pull it up, we can move on to the next question. John, apparently you have more questions.
Very simple questions, and Richard can answer this while he's looking. The slide he presented on sea level rise, that was a NOAA slide. And as I remember going to the NOAA hearing where the city presented their stuff, NOAA did not consider wave uprush, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I don't recall that.
Okay.
Just to finish up on the view corridor, yeah, I did see this exhibit, but I didn't find it dispositive because it doesn't say anything about the relative elevations of the, you know, the, what do you put?
Oh, yeah, it doesn't look like it's appearing there. Can you guys see it? It's kind of, I can see it on my screen, but it might be pretty faint on yours. So the one to the right is a photo I kind of use from Google, but on the left is what the applicant provided, and what it does show is, they kind of showed the base elevation for the site, and with the development in the Mobile Home Park, what that elevation would also be, and it happened to be, what was it, Donald, one hundred and twelve?
Yeah, I'm not making sense of this graphic now. It is hard to read. But this represents that question for both sides of the lot, or just the north side? That's, both sides are on there? Just yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, so this is, I guess part of the thing is, there's a sense that this may be appealed, we're getting things in the record, so, John, your next question.
Okay.
If I could, when I'm saying yes, you asked me yes or no. The hundred and twelve-foot elevation is across the way there. We had it surveyed, and we had the cross-section done by the engineer, so that's why I answered yes to your question.
Okay, just to clarify then, the elevation at street level is what?
Right, one hundred and twelve point five.
Is one twelve in the elevation?
One hundred and seven and change from the street.
So a drop of seven feet across, and theoretically you could then see ocean in front of Malibu Road?
No, theoretically, no. The code specifies that the line of sight is from the street elevation looking directly out. And so the elevation of the Mobile Home Park is higher than the elevation of Zemira's.
Higher? I thought you were saying it was seven feet lower.
No, 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 sir. Zemira's is one hundred and seven and change, and the Mobile Home Park is at one hundred and twelve point five.
All right, thank you, I didn't mean to get that much here, but, okay, John, next question.
These are all simple questions. I don't believe the Mobile Home Park is under the Malibu LIP for permit, so is the fire department clearance part of our thing, and do mobile homes have to get fire department clearance whenever they move a mobile home? Because an extensive area of this map is showing as fire department clearance.
Yeah, you're right, we don't review development within the Mobile Home Park, so...
So that coverage is not germane, is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay, let's see here. And then, when I looked at it, it looked like this was a blue line stream. And my question is twofold. One, is there a fishing game study on it and has been permitted? And as I remember, and I don't have the code in front of me, that four-to-one slopes are in the LIP as the Esha for Point Doom, except blue line streams, which have to follow the stream section of the LIP about setbacks from riparian habitats. And it seems that the applicant is saying that, no, there's no exception, you can mess with a blue line stream and not consider the riparian habitats.
And I guess to just clarify his question, if all of Point Doom is four to one, why would there still be blue line streams drawn on it?
Well, because that's state law, there are blue line streams.
So this particular, whatever you want to call it, is not a mapped blue line stream. There are areas that are mapped blue line stream, this one is not. Also, the way Point Doom was considered was, I believe back in the day, was if you avoid four-to-one slopes, then you are avoiding essentially all the Esha in the area. And so that's why the city has also always taken the approach, which was confirmed also by coastal commission staff, that areas within Point Doom just have to avoid four-to-one slopes to meet the Esha requirement.
Well, when I went to the hearing in 2002, they did say that you have to deal with riparian habitat. You're saying that you can bulldoze riparian habitat and just not consider it?
No, but for this particular site, again, it wasn't a mapped blue line stream, so there was no early indication of a possible riparian habitat.
What's mentioned in the staff report, riparian habitat.
It's mentioned that it avoids any riparian habitat, if any.
Yeah, but my question is, did anybody measure the riparian habitat, and do you have any setback from it? All streams have some kind of bush around them. You know, I'm only asking this because of the comments of the biologist, but, okay, so you're saying that in your opinion, you can ignore riparian habitat?
It's not that staff's ignoring the riparian habitat, it's that in the Point Doom, in the Point Doom area, there are only two canyons that show up on the Esha map, and those are on the west side of Point Doom. And the original maps were going to have Esha protection. However, what ended up happening, the approved LIP ended up removing that Esha protection and put in this caveat that when you're in the Point Doom area, you avoid four-to-one slopes. The intention there is that by avoiding four-to-one slopes, you're avoiding the riparian habitat that's on Point Doom. The city previously attempted, the city biologist, not the current one, but the previous city biologist, attempted to justify development using the one-hundred-foot buffer and apply that. However, the planning commission said that, no, that does not apply. Now, granted, the biologist and the applicant at that time, and I'm not suggesting they weren't cahoots with each other, I'm just saying they both happened to have the same opinion, were using that as a justification for why they should be allowed to do development on a four-to-one slope. And the planning commission at the time, this is 2006, 2007, made it very clear that in the Point Doom area, the concern is four-to-one slopes, and you avoid those. There is not leeway in the code or the applicability to require staying a hundred feet. Now, I know there was a comment brought up here earlier today about a biological inventory being required for a project up the street. That is incorrect. I believe the applicant submitted that inventory on their own accord. I checked the submittal checklist, it was not required. And in the three biology reviews done by the city biologist, she did not use the bio-inventory in any of her reviews. And in addition, when there was an appeal up the street, the coastal commission was not concerned with Esha. The substantial issue was strictly limited to disagreement with the city's determination on four-to-one slopes, not Esha.
Well, okay, I just seem to remember the staff said, except the stream definitions. But there is, to clarify, there is no fishing game approval on this.
Right.
And that's in state law, so how do we get around that? That's not an LIP.
It's not a blue line stream.
Right, there's no development within the streams, there's no fishing wildlife requirement.
There's no requirement.
Okay, then, now, I was recused on the one up the street because it's right across the street from me. But I did talk to the owner after dealing with the coastal commission, and he basically was forced to redo his house because of the way the bluff was measured. And it cost him, it's going to cost him a bunch of money and a bunch of time. So was this measured a different way? Because, well, I'm just trying to see whether...
That's too abstract.
No, it's not too abstract, it's a very specific question. Was it measured under different standards than the one up the street?
I believe I understand your question, and that is why staff asked the applicant to provide us with a second survey to verify that there was no development taking place on a four-to-one slope. So the difference being is that there was an area we found to be questionable, and we asked for, like I said, basically a second opinion, if you will, and they did provide us with a second wet-stamped survey.
Now, my, one of the things I observed when I visited the property a long time ago...
Are we, is this still slope or something new?
Slope, 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 slope. And the definition of a slope, if there's a step out in it, is you have to take the highest point. And it didn't appear that that's what they did. Now, have you certified that they're measuring the slope from the top of slope? Because there's a step down there, and you can't do that.
So there's a difference between, are we moving on to bluff now? Is that what I'm...
No, no, I'm talking about...
Okay, but that's kind of where we're getting into, right?
Yeah.
I just want to be sure I'm answering the question correctly.
That is bluff, let me talk about, I have some notes on slope too.
Okay, but you're saying that there is no requirement on a slope to measure it from the top of slope.
What I'm saying is, there's a difference between a hillside and a bluff, and the setbacks from the top of each, so...
All right, a couple of observations about slope while we're on the topic. We went out there, we took out John Maz's famous four-to-one slope stick and a level, and just sort of randomly put it in the area where this project would be, downslope of the existing house, and just said, "Try it there, what does that look like? Well, let's try it over there," and just kind of, you know, nothing too premeditated about anything. And it was, every spot we tried, it was four or five spots, was definitely steeper than four to one. Okay, so that's one thing. And parenthetically, I'll note that I have seen other projects where the slope was not what it was advertised in the survey, so I'm less prepared to just automatically trust the licensed expert because I've seen it with my own eyes. Anyway, that was dramatic. We also have Mark Johnson's study showing the slope overall to be three-point-seven to one. We saw his graphic. I know John Smiths doesn't like that methodology, that you have to use the five-foot contours, but with our four-foot stick, that pretty much encompasses, the variation that we would have missed with the four-foot stick on a five-foot contour was not significant compared to the slope we got out of it. Tyler, Mr. Eaton said staff redid the analysis and found some three-point-seven to one under structure. He was asked by Doug Stewart how big, and you said it was about the size of two spas, which I take to mean approximately half a swimming pool that's over the line. So staff has already found it to be on greater than four-to-one slopes. That's in the record. And then I also just, you know, I don't know if this is anecdotal, but when you look on the survey with the old house on it, you can see that the contour lines start tightening up under the corner of the old house already. And so that, everything downslope of where the old house would be is therefore going to be on that four-to-one slope. So I mean, it seems to me it's not up to us to design this or anything, but we'd be looking at a setback of fifteen or twenty feet to solve that problem. Okay, John, next issue.
I have a question.
Question, yeah.
Go for it.
Is it our job to challenge two certified surveys?
It is if you are making a direct observation and you feel like you have facts in disagree with...
Drew, can I answer that? And this is just, I was recused, okay? We had, but I watched the hearing. We had a challenge on whether this house directly up the street, right across from me, was on a four-to-one slope. And Mr. Smiths said, "You can't challenge a surveyor." Well, it cost the guy about $200,000 and he has to redesign his house, because it was. And the coastal commission said so.
No, it's not the same surveyor.
Not the same surveyor, but it is not always clear. It depends on the method you use, they use these averaging methods and these, you know, two feet...
I mean, you guys are not certified surveyors.
I know, we weren't certified surveyors, but the coastal commission made him cancel his house, made him withdraw, because whoever observed that was smarter than the surveyor. So I may not be a surveyor, I didn't testify at that hearing, it cost the guy a lot of money and a lot of time.
John, the other house isn't relevant. I think what may be relevant...
Do you make the argument that the surveyor is always right?
Our job is to make a decision with the information that we have in front of us right now, and this project's going to be appealed at some point, and they'll have to, you know, we have to go with what we have in front of us.
And what I was just quoting for, I think the staff themselves have pointed out that some of it is over, four to one. That's in the record on the council hearing. Tyler, yeah?
Yeah, so the applicant supplied a slope analysis that showed those areas were not four, were less than four to one. Our job as reviewers is to double-check the accuracy to the best of our abilities. Our tools probably aren't as good as theirs, I'll admit that, but, you know, there was an area that came up questionable in the pool, about four hundred square feet, let's say. So we asked for a second slope analysis, which confirmed that it was less than four to one. And so we accepted that analysis.
But you did the second one before the council hearing, correct?
It was submitted right before the March planning commission, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, so, I mean, you made the representation that there was four to one, I'm pretty certain after both surveys had been done.
No, the, both surveys had been done before the original planning commission meeting in March.
Okay, so you made this representation at the council meeting in October. That's what I'm quoting from.
Yeah, I explained why there was two slope analyses in the record, but that was before we even came to a meeting. You know, like I said, our role is to make sure the information is accurate, and so before we even got to the first planning commission meeting, we asked for supplemental analysis.
Okay, so there's a potential issue here, again, this feels like it'll probably be appealed by one side or the other, so we're putting things in the record. Let's try to air out all the issues before, you know, it's already 10:43. John?
I just feel it's ridiculous for you guys to sit here and say that we have our own tools and we're doing our own measurements and trying to put that on the record.
Well, you're...
No, we're not saying that, we're saying that the record, the surveyors are not always right, and there is a...
Two of them?
Yeah, okay, now, Carter, could you put up the slide of the aerial view that shows the neighborhood from the sky? It's Don's slide, I don't know if his numbers are right, or...
We're moving on here, right, John?
Now, well, you're putting this slide up saying, "Stream repair and new development shall provide a buffer in no less than a hundred feet." Is there a reason you put that up?
No.
I think you're looking for slide thirty-two, and then the aerial photograph is slide thirty-three, followed by thirty-four and thirty-five, when you're looking at neighborhood character, is that what, yeah, that's...
It looks like thirty-three.
And the one before that was the tabulation of the structures over eighteen foot, which I guess is thirty-one.
Thank you. The house is going to push out from where it is now, and I don't know how many feet that is. Whoops. Can I go back to that?
Ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, quickly.
Is the house going to be protruding out further than Ms. Friesen's deck?
Let's put it up again and we can see it. Let's put it up again and we can see it. Yeah, from the aerial. That's John Keyes's house.
I feel like there was an aerial that's even better than this one.
Well, yeah, there could be, but.
It's, this, this is a, an angle view. There is a flat aerial that shows the.
Yeah, this is the oblique.
Yeah, oblique, thank you.
In the previous presentations, we had an exhibit that showed that on the contour lines that we were consistent with neighborhood character, and through the chair, Commissioner Leonard, no, it's, it's roughly commensurate with Ms. Friesen's deck where it comes out.
And here's, this, this is more, I mean, this isn't the exact one that was in the past, but it's, yeah, his conclusion.
Does it say what, yeah, does it say what slide that is? Do you know that one, Don?
That is the one that shows sea level rise or lack thereof?
Conclusion, direction of view corridor, no ocean views, 20%. There's the view corridor slide.
Yeah, yeah, conclude, view corridor, no ocean views.
In rebuttal or at the beginning, guys?
It's, it's about.
Is it the same order?
My staff needs to number all these consistently, I apologize.
It's number, well, it's not numbered like the other ones are. I mean.
Chair?
Yes.
It should be 29.
29.
Somebody said chair, yes, what?
I did.
Yeah, Dennis.
While you guys are going through all that, I want to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay, well, we're going through all this.
Okay, well, well, hang on, hang on, hang on. We have a motion on the table. We have a second.
I second it.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion to approve for, on the table for discussion.
Yeah, so in the meantime, can I get the slide, get an answer? It looks like 28.
Maybe, maybe while they're.
29, 28, I believe.
While they're finding that slide, we could move. Oh, I think you're close. You must be very close.
Go back one, I think is the one that they were looking at, which was a view corridor one. That one, there you go.
There you go. Now, you'll see that there's a natural curve there where all the old houses were built. Keyes is the latest one to be built, which is that one. But you're pushing out from what the prior homes have been.
No, sir.
So how far are you pushing out? Do you have your little thing?
He's asking me a question, Chair.
Is he? Are you asking Don a question?
Well, he's got the light. If you want to hand me the light, I'll do it, but could you?
But you were asking if we were pushing out further.
Yes.
The contour lines, going from memory, these, some of these homes go further down on a lower contour interval. We're about commensurate with that, we're maybe a little bit more than Friesen and, and less so than the Keyes house.
Well, you're talking about elevations now.
Elevations, correct.
No, I'm not talking, I'm talking about.
Consistent contour line, which is less subjective.
Okay, for, for the record, I recall the, the difference in elevations of six houses, the variation between the highest and lowest was eight feet.
Okay, but I, what I'm talking about is prior development had a curved, what do you want to call it, a bluff, or I don't know what you call it, side of a hill, okay? And then this one all of a sudden is sticking out farther than the rest of them. Is there a reason, geological reason for that, or is that the way you surveyed it, or what? I mean, because it's very clear how it curves.
Through the chair, Commissioner Mazza, this subject home was built in 1949. These properties were significantly modified through grading and development. A lot of the homes have been completely redeveloped, specifically these coming up here, and of course, the Keyes house. This one is older. This is our new neighbor, used to be the Penn Trust lot, and this is our loyal opposition, Ms. Friesen here. The location for the footprint of the home that we have proposed, it is before you tonight, is roughly commensurate with the homes that have been approved by the coastal commission and by the city of Malibu in regards to the contour elevation. And, but we are constrained by the grading that transpired over half a century ago that created the gentle slope, and then what you have referred to as this, this gentle bench right in here before it drops off. So irrespective of the location of the surrounding development, we can go no further than what we are proposing because of the four to one slopes, which then pick up as you go downslope to the east.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, John, John, just, just for clarity, just for some, something absolute to hang on to, what, remind us what the, how much further this structure extends into the, towards the canyon compared to the old house? How many feet?
You know off the top of your head? No, I, I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head.
We did, we did have an exhibit the first time through, we looked at this. I don't recall.
We did. So I'm going to take a wild guess. I'm going to say 30 feet or so. It's, because the old house stops, it's got the gentle slope which goes down to the lower area. It's set back further than, say, for instance, set more to the west than, say, Ms. Friesen's house, which you can see here, and her deck, and you can see that the subject, existing home is located right here. You see that? So we're going out roughly to about commensurate with, with Ms. Friesen's house, and commensurate with the neighboring development. This is their guest house, sound studio, and then the contour lines come back in, and we're actually set back at a, at a higher elevation than the neighbors over here.
When you, when you say commensurate, you're, you're, you're talking about the front edge of the, the main part of the house, or are you, are you saying the, I think that's what you're saying, and that the pool in the lower area sticks out further yet?
Doesn't stick out further.
But it's lower, it's lower down.
Let me ask them, I have to talk to the point I'm trying to make.
And with apologies to all of you, this conversation here is, is not something that we've really been focusing in on, because there's not a string line rule, there's no regulation in regards to this, this is all controlled by.
No, let me make my question clear. This area's been developed over 60 years. The newer houses are set back farther, okay? Donkey's house is.
No, sir, no, that's, that's incorrect.
It is a curve, it's not a straight line.
The, the contours and the canyon curves, John.
What?
The canyon curves.
That's my point.
And, and, but, but the point is, is that the steeper slopes in the edge of the canyon, these homes are built closer than what we have down here, or, or on the Keyes property.
You, no, let me state the question differently. This canyon has a curved top of bluff, or whatever you want to call it, top of.
Top of the canyon, yes.
Whatever. The house that you pointed out next door, that's got the guest house sticking out front, that was bootlegged, I know who built it. And then the other houses farther up are, are pushed, they're all in the semicircle. All of a sudden, the house in the middle is coming out more than the rest of them. So you're telling me that the other people, Howard Keyes, put his house there because he couldn't get it any farther closer?
You know, it's a better exhibit to look at.
He can't tell you that.
If you go to slide 21, we have the contour, we have the contour line.
I was going to say, what's the, what's the municipal codes?
You follow the contour line. See how it's curved?
Right.
The red part?
Right.
That's curved.
So this is, this is a consistent.
When you push out beyond that red curve, you're going into a different slope.
All right.
But never mind, never mind.
We're spinning wheels, it's on, it's on the record.
We have a motion before us, let's just hold on.
It's on the record. On, on this point, though, I, let me just note for the record, that neighborhood character, we have a site plan review, that's the only discretionary element that you've got on the thing, right? So that does invoke the neighborhood character factor. Contrary to Commissioner, ex-Commissioner Jennings' assertion, that doesn't apply exclusively to, and only things over 18 feet, because we have in the past, in interpretation, once we have that SPR on the table, it's a flexible analysis requiring judgment about size, scale, et cetera. So we've looked at comparative sizes, houses in terms of TDF, or the proportion of the second floor to the first floor, we did that on Gray Fox. We've considered front yard setbacks, and whether one house pushes out substantially closer to the street than others. So this, this discussion about where it lays, there is a neighborhood character component to this, I think. And it, it isn't exactly a string line, but it is sort of analogous to that. And I think what John's getting at is, you know, you might set off a sort of war if they push out, other people along here might try to push out more, and it's a, it's a whole threat to whatever that riparian environment is down below in the end. So just to, just to put that cap on, on his comment, do you have other issues?
No, let's call a question.
I, I, just for the record, a couple of things to mention, or question, the hillside, this is for staff, hillside development standards, they don't apply, or you're saying they do apply, but the view impact is not significant?
So which hillside standards, the LCP ones?
Yeah, LIP 6.4, 6.0, that whole section.
Yeah, that chapter applies.
That chapter.
The scenic section applies, but they were not anticipated to be impactful.
All right, so just for the record, it is a public beach, you can see the house, these slopes are greater than 20%, that's LIP 6.2. So the threshold question in 6.4 is whether, as proposed, it will have no significant adverse scenic or visual impacts, blah, da, da, da. I think, so the question is what's significant, because you're putting a bigger house on the lot, pushing it closer to the edge, more visible from the beach, more so-called visual mass, and, and, and like we were just talking about, it's going to stick out a little bit. So it, it, it may not be extreme, but I don't think it's no impact. And analogous to the, the ridgeline rules, this would also block more of the sky view and square it off. So what you see from the beach isn't like a cozy cottage community, it's more of a, something more monolithic and blocky. So I, I don't, it's, it's, it's up to whoever's going to be deciding in the future whether that's significant or not. But if, if it is then, under 6.4, we would have to find that there are no feasible alternatives to development that would avoid or substantially lessen that impact. And here again, I think, you know, if you push the house back 15, 20 feet, whatever, you'd be addressing the slope question, the potential view impact from the beach question.
Yeah, but we don't design houses.
But we don't design houses.
Can I ask Don a question?
Yeah, please.
Now that we're getting down to a vote, and there's been talk of appeals, do you want to continue this to answer the questions that the other people brought up, or do you want to vote now?
We want to vote now.
Okay, so let's call a question.
Okay, I, I'd like to know, I don't know, is Mark Johnson still online? Is he? And, and I will ask the applicant this too. Well, okay, about erosion rate, erosional retreat, there's no accounting for it. You have said, I'll paraphrase you, but that you told the council that the aerial photos no, shows no change, but that's not very close resolution if we're talking about an inch or two a year, that might not show up on a 2D picture because the vegetation gradually grows and accommodates. So for all we know, things could be changing a lot over time. If, and so I guess I would ask you both, Mark first, in that position, are you qualified to appoint on, like, what distance that would erode per year?
I really don't have enough information to say. There wasn't anything in any of the geo reports that would really, they didn't address that at all.
Yeah, no, and that's part of my question, it wasn't addressed.
Did you get an answer from Don?
No, he didn't.
We'll get one in a second.
I go next.
So, and, and is your position, so your position is you can't even say there would, there might be some, but you don't know, you just have to say you don't know, period? Mark?
Oh, I don't know, period, but what I do.
Okay, okay, that's, that's good, that's, I, you know. Don, I, you don't have these, this number, but what's your comment on it?
Yes, sir, we do. And, and Mr. Johnson should have done a more thorough job in reviewing the file.
Oh, come on now.
Because, no, he should.
No, no, no.
Because he asserted that we didn't analyze it. If there was a supplemental analysis.
This is a direct question. We don't need to review his performance.
On the retreat question.
And your answer is?
The answer is it was specifically looked at by land phases and solid, and they submitted those in September 21st, 2023. They looked at over 70 years of aerial photographs. They analyzed the geology. There is no demonstrable retreat from that canyon wall. It is an erosional feature with an intermittent stream, and yes, they did that analysis, and that was submitted to the city geologist as well.
Okay, I, I asked the question because Jake Holt in the council meeting said, quote, "We do not have to do erosional retreat analysis because it's not a coastal bluff." And it's not a coastal bluff. I think everybody's agreed on that. But it is bluff, so, okay, thank you. Just trying to see if there's any, oh, conditions. We're, we're talking about approving it, potential conditions here. I would call this a full archaeological monitoring condition. Drew, I don't know if you're familiar with our practice here, but when it's, a project is in a, a location of high potential prehistoric gemash sensitivity, such as Paradise Cove and around Point Doom in particular, we put in a condition that says they need to have the monitor observing all excavation. And in this case, yes, there's a preexisting house, but we're going much deeper into the ground, deeper is where you would find prehistoric remains.
Yep, not a phase one.
John, tell me, tell me your comment out loud. I don't, I don't want to.
Well, I, I don't think we should condition.
Well, this is.
Change, you know.
We would accept that condition, Chair Hill. We did do a, an archaeological report by Waldarsky. The project is being conditioned for monitoring, but anything you need, Chair Hill, to tighten up archaeological issues, we're happy to do.
We have monitoring condition now.
Okay, yeah, but it's, 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 it's not, it's after the fact. If we find something, we'll call somebody. And just to be clear, the, the new upstream neighbor, Patrick McNicholas, said he signed in favor of this with the expectation that Mr. Rouse could pay to have power lines undergrounded. Is that, is that, is that our purview to be horse trading on that? We can't condition that.
No, sir, that's, no, that's not what he said. He, he said that he was cooperating with the applicants for undergrounding. He also said in his letter that he hired a development consultant that reviewed the plans, confirmed that the plans were consistent with the local coastal program, and that he was now in support of the project.
Okay, and then I guess another condition is, could some kind of sound wall screening be done on the spa because it is so close to the house to the south? What are, what, what provisions could be made to make any noise or, you know, visual, some privacy impacts? I mean, I know, that's, that's your biggest opponent right now, so could, is there something you could do to make that happier for them?
Yes, just so long as we don't run into any sort of problems with wall heights or anything like that, but we're, I don't think that we would, and we'd be more than happy to, to do that to address any sound concerns.
Now, we're not supposed to be designing anything, so Patrick.
That's a condition, that's, that's not a design.
Yes, I mean, I think that you would, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Chair Hill, something along the lines of Vice Chairman Rouse, if you.
Say again?
Something along the lines of, you know, either a sound wall or other sound mitigation feature shall be installed, and if you want to defer to Director Malika, to his satisfaction.
Yeah, and I'm thinking privacy generous, so sound and visual.
Well, can I ask Richard a question on that? They, they can't have sound trespass to the neighbor, correct, under the codes? Five feet?
Yeah, but if you, no, you can, if they're just hanging out, you can't enforce that.
Yes, yeah, that'd be, the, the chair is correct. It'd be hard just hanging out, and equipment, of course, has to be screened and for the purposes of sound. The only concern I have with the sound wall is, and the applicant would know this better than myself, I just want to make certain that we're not putting some sort of structure that would impact view from somebody to the north looking over the property?
No, I am confident that we would not be impacting any primary views, or that it would be over 18 feet. So, in fact, there is a slide in our presentation that shows that entire portion of the pool and the deck and everything else is behind the angle of the house. We specifically designed it that way, so nobody to the north even sees the deck or the, or the spa over on that side, pursuant to us relocating it from the northerly side of the pool where we had it originally, now it's down on the southerly portion of the pool, so it's behind the house.
If it is the commission's pleasure, then, we could add a condition that the applicant shall propose a sound wall on, I would call it the spa deck.
Sure.
Is that what, that way it's within the existing development area that the commission has approved, and it's not some new development outside of that area.
I, I, I don't know, I mean, it feels like this is going to be decided by somebody else down the line. So, so let's call the question. It's, that, that concept is on the table, right? Let's call the question as is. Let's call the question as is. I personally, I, I have trouble making some of these findings as, as I've articulated, I think. So.
So Drew made it and he seconded.
No, it was, it was vice versa. It was Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Leonard as staff recommends.
Can, can I ask for clarification on are you asking for those amendments as friendly amendments that need to be accepted by the maker and seconder?
Uh, I was.
And are you?
But so we, I mean.
I, I didn't understand what you said at the end of that.
Yeah, I, I want to put them in because I, I think somebody else is going to decide this, but these are, these are things that, that decision-making bodies should be thinking about.
So Commissioner Smith, are you willing to accept those amendments?
The only thing that I feel that needs to be talked about would be some kind of a mitigation for sound. Other than that, nothing.
So you're rejecting the amendment on full cultural monitoring during all excavation?
We're accepting that. Okay. We're okay with it.
That's okay, so it's.
Oh, right.
The concept is out there.
Well, yeah, we have to do that anyway, so that's not like it's.
And then Commissioner Leonard, the same question for you?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So they're, they're both in there, just, just for the record, it will be in addition to, I believe it's condition number 13, which as you said, Chair Hill, that's the one I believe you described it as, if you find something, then we have to call someone. We would, you know, include the full monitor during all excavation activities.
Correct.
And then we would add, I believe, in my opinion, we would add a new condition 78 and then renumber all the rest of them accordingly. And Director Malika, I'm going to rely upon you, a sound wall or other similar feature shall be installed, shall be installed on the spa deck to the satisfaction of the, of the planning director.
Sounds good. And, and Don knows, all these areas around, right down around there, we do the, the extra archaeological thing as a matter of practice.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
All right, let's have, let's call the question.
So the motion maker and the second agree to those changes?
Agree.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Hill?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, I move. We adjourn the meeting in honor of.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
You need to make a decision.
No, no.
We, we, we have to, we have to make a decision on, we either have to make a decision.
First thing, until we make a decision.
We, we either have to make a decision or, or we have to continue it, right? Is that, that's the range of options?
I mean, correct. And so I, I do want to, I, I believe I did use the word remand. That was probably in error. You are correct, Commissioner Hill, if you look at the action minutes from the city council, it said it remains with the planning commission. I'm a bit hesitant to do this. I'm, I am going to implore you four, you guys are up here for a reason. That is to make decisions. I understand it's difficult. I understand there's differing opinions. I'm not putting my finger on the scale one way or the other, but this, this forever deadlocked and just continuing and kicking the can down the road is, should really, really be avoided.
True.
Now, so what do we do? Continue the hearing?
John, John, Drew had, Drew had his hand up.
I think this is ridiculous. We have a phone book on this project. This applicant has been working on this forever and we're not doing our job.
Well, are you doing your job or am I doing my job? Do I go any further now?
And, and I, I will add that to the likely dismay of, of Mr. Schmitz, it's, you know, in my experience with the city, it is likely this is going to get appealed one way or the other. I can't guarantee that, but I think you guys all have experience that no matter which way you guys go, it will, it will be decided upon by the, by the city council. And once again, I'm going to implore you all to make a decision tonight.
Well, I, I would just say that for multiple reasons, this would be easy to vote yes on if the whole thing were pulled back 15 or 20 feet, having to do with both the, the slope, having to do with the neighborhood character, having to do with the hillside ordinance and what you actually see from the beach. It just seems like the, the, the design change would not have to be significant because you've got a deep lot. So you could pretty much just suck the whole thing, but again, we can't design, but.
Can I address that, Chair Hill?
No.
I wasn't asking you.
Hang on, gentlemen, gentlemen.
I was asking Chair Hill.
There is no vote.
I asked the chair if I could answer.
Chair, take, yeah, take control, Chair.
Hold up, hold up, hang on.
I'm going to make a motion.
Dennis's light is on, are you?
No, I'm just watching this thing unfold.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we approve this project if it's moved back 15 feet.
I'll, I'll second that.
Hang on, hang on. So Richard and Tyler, do we, I'm, I'm going to need your guys' expertise on something like that. I, I can't craft those, those conditions. And so if we, I'm looking at the, I'm looking for some, once again, I, I can hear some changes about, you know, resources and, and sand walls. I, I, I don't know what that looks like practically moving the entire project back 15 feet. That, that is something that, that evades my, my level of expertise.
Glad lot. What I'm trying to do is you want a vote that passes. Okay, I'm trying to make a comment.
I didn't say that. I'm saying a decision for the applicant so they can move on one way or the, or the other.
Yes, doesn't have to be affirmative. It could be a negative. We just, we need something to work with here because if, essentially in a, if it ends in an appeal, regardless of which side, it is better for us because there are findings. If we just walk away from this with a 2-2, there are no findings, unfortunately. And if, if the applicant wants to agree to shifting the house forward, given the characteristics of this lot, I believe that it is something we could do here this evening, but once again, that would rest with the applicant.
Well, if I may, Richard, in terms of findings, it's easy enough to just point at the things that we've suggested, and for example, hillside ordinance grading, you know, those, those are the factors that we would be attempting to ameliorate.
I, I would let the, our city attorney jump in on this, but I believe they need to be made by a majority.
Right.
And that's the issue.
Sure.
Right.
So I, I'll change my, my motion to approve a contingent upon receiving, if you want, I mean, if you want to do all this fancy stuff, or they can accept it. If you want an alternate motion, I'll make it a motion that bring back a plan showing 15 feet, move towards the street, and continue the hearing for approval upon that plan being feasible.
Well, and, and so just, and I, I hate to jump in here, we, we cannot bind a, a future planning commission?
No, no, I'm not binding them. I'm just saying you bring it back and we'll see if it works.
Got it. So, so the, the motion would be to direct the applicant to bring back a, a project that has shifted 15 percent, 15 feet for consideration.
Yeah, and, and I can, I can go either way. I can make either motion. You can agree now or bring it back and show it to us.
Drew, what's your?
I just wanted to see if there are any comments from the applicant.
Thank you. I know, I would, I would like to notice the applicant. Don't, don't tell me. I can't. Tell me, tell me how, why this would not be possible. It seems like a reasonable thing. Why, why isn't it reasonable?
Because the house is a three-dimensional house, which has been designed after years of work on a gently sloping component. We would have to completely redesign the house, which means it took the city, what, two or three years to get us to our first hearing? We'd have to go back through all the different departments, geology and soils, biology, health department, public works, et cetera. We, it is an extraordinary redesign of this home. It's essentially, no, no, sir, please, let me finish here because.
Okay, I thought you were going.
We're getting, we're, we're getting right out towards the edge of some stuff here and I'm getting shouted down. And I'd like to address this. So this is very surprising to me that basically if there's a tie vote, which was incredibly predictable by the council, we're going to take the position, well, we just don't have anything definitive here for us to appeal. The opponents made the legal arguments to the city council that the tie vote you had last time constituted a denial and that we should have filed an appeal of that action. What we understood to be the position of the city and the opponents was that if we had a tie vote tonight, then we could appeal that to the city council. Now, if you want to condition an approval on the project that we move the house back 15 feet, I'm not in agreement with that, but you can approve the project based upon that to deal with this conundrum that we're having for the deadlock, and we'll appeal it up to the city council. Or you can respect the position that was taken by our opponents and everybody else that somehow we should have known that your deadlock last time constituted denial. And if you remain deadlocked tonight, we will appeal that to the city council. But what's not acceptable to us, there are two options which just don't work. We're not going to agree to go back and redesign this house 15, please let me finish.
I'm, I'm letting you, I'm telling John to stop.
I appreciate it, Chair. I, I do, I appreciate that. We're not going to agree to go back and redesign this house and spend the next year or so doing that and bring it back to the planning commission. We're not going to do that. And we're not going to agree to a position that if you are deadlocked, that this is just, we're in this twilight never, never land and we don't get to appeal to the council.
Okay, I think we've heard that. Richard, I'd like to take some clarification.
Before that, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Your, and your motion was to just approve it, move back 15 feet?
Yeah, that's, that's withdrawn because obviously it's not going to work, so.
Well, hang on, hang on. Richard said, and I wanted to get to the, the truth of this. He said, theoretically, maybe that might be possible. Let's, let's drill down a little on that and see. You know, it seems to me like certain of the studies would still be applicable. Certainly the grading would be a different situation because you're now, you could, theoretically, you could, Richard, I don't know, you, you tell me. Theoretically, you could do basically the same design. The grading profile would be different because the terrain is different, and probably the fire department would want to do a different walk around. But things like the biology, probably the geology, some of that other stuff, that would still be applicable. What, how, how much would they have to change, Richard?
So that's just it. When I look at this, I'm looking at from what technical reports, geology reviews, public works, that, from a planning perspective, the box can shift. I don't believe those would be affected. The applicant is correct. They're, they've, they're fitting some topography here, so they would have to essentially reconfigure their plans to, to, to adapt to the lot because of that slope. So from the perspective I'm looking at of technical reports, I believe they would all still apply, but Mr. Schmitz is correct, they would have to do some reconfigurations on their design and meet with their architect.
Everything, everything changes, you guys. Come on. You just can't take a house and pull it back. It's engineering, it's structural, everything changes. Now you've done this, maybe another span doesn't work on a spot, and the engineer's got to look at that. It's just ridiculous.
What, what we're trying to do here, and help us if you can be creative, is to get to some position.
Creative is another million and a half dollars. Another million and a half dollars in another year or two years. That's not creative.
All right, thank you. John?
We were asked to take a vote that wasn't a tie. Then we were told, no, okay? I'm not going to do it. So I'm going to reintroduce the motion to, for denial and ask for a second, and then we'll have another vote and see if it's 2-2. Because we had a vote on yes, yes. We have a vote on no, no. No, no change. I don't see how that's going to resolve itself, but we need to take that vote.
If, if I understand the city's position, I think this differs from what Don has said about the effect of a 2-2.
That's not in our purview.
Well, we, if, if we, if we just have a 2-2, we can, what, call adjournment and walk away, and what happens?
Continue it. He said you had to continue it.
And then what?
See if they come out, if they decide.
No, 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 I didn't say, I didn't say that, that you, you had to continue it. So the, the, the LIP requires any decision be supported by findings. A 2-2 vote either way is, you're right, it's a, it's a, it's, it's nothing. There, there's nothing I can point to, to Mr. Schmitz to say, here is the decision for the planning commission for, 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 for you to appeal.
I understand that. I, I understand. No, I understand that. So we have two people who want to approve it and two people who can't approve it. So we have a tie. Now, the only way to change that is to change something.
Hang on, hang on. Don's saying, well, we have, we have opponents who have a view of what happens, that a 2-2 would result in denial, in which case the findings would be the different things that we have trouble making, whether it's the slope and the, the character, the hillside ordinance, whatever they may be. Those would be institutionalized as the, the basis for denial.
Right, so, so, so I, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to leave the, the issue about what the opponent said and, and, and get to that, that issue. No, I, I don't see how it would be proper for a resolution of denial with the, let's just say in this instance, with the issues that yourself, Chair and Vice Chair bring up.
I'm sorry, wait, slow down. John, you keep talking to me. I'm, I'm happy to hear from you, but, but say it publicly.
I just want to ask the city attorney.
Sure.
What jurisdiction do we have on a 2-2 tie? It's going to be a lawsuit. One lawyer's turned in an opinion, city, city attorney's turned in an opinion. It's not our opinion, it's not our purview to decide what happens on a 2-2 tie. You can give your opinion, another lawyer's giving his opinion, there's a lawsuit coming, and it's not under our purview. It's not.
Sure, so I'm, what, what I'm hoping my opinion does is spurs this body to make a decision one way or the other. Going back to your original question, Chair Hill, no, I, I'm not aware of any legal authority, nor, nor do I think it equitable, for a 2-2 vote to then take the written finding, not the, the findings as yourself and Vice Chair feel about this project, insert those into a resolution and say, this is the, this is the action of this body. Going back to the opponents, I take it, when they say a 2-2 vote is a, is a quote unquote denial, sure, they, they are correct in that, yes, the project cannot get built on a, on a, on a 2-2 vote. But that denial requires written findings based off of the evidence and based off of the, you know, the, 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 the code sections that you guys have to justify.
So just to be clear, we, we wouldn't be stating a couple grounds that seem problematic, having you, having staff write up a version of that for us to approve on consent? You're just saying that that's.
I mean, so if there, if there is a, if there is a majority of, of the quorum, including if someone would like to abstain one way or the other in order to give the project applicants a decision to appeal, I cannot stress this enough, Chair, you know, Chair and Vice Chair, as you said, with the attorneys involved, it's, it's almost a near certainty that this is going to get appealed. So that's why you guys are up here to make a decision, and if it takes some back and forth tonight to figure it out, I would encourage you to do that.
I have a, I have a question.
Then Drew. Go ahead, Drew.
You're asking the applicant to make special conditions, kind of giving the hint that you're planning on voting yes for it, and then you vote no after they say yes to your conditions?
They did.
Yeah, they did. The archaeology and all that.
Did you say yes to moving back 15 feet?
No, I agreed to Chair Hill's suggesting conditions for archaeology and sound attenuation.
Drew, that, that happens often where we, you know, you have to look at it from both sides and, you know, if you have to, you have to think ahead. If it's going to pass, then do you want to do these things or not? Whether I'm voting for them or not?
Take your vote. Let's get the hell out of here. Let's go.
I am, I am making a motion for denial.
And, and are we, staff, are we good, should this pass, that we, we are good to put together a resolution of, because once again, that, that, that motion would be to direct staff to bring back a resolution of denial for the reasons set forth here tonight? Is that, is that the motion, Vice Chair?
I don't think we've had any reasons determined.
So then I'm.
We, we mentioned. Probably 30 of them.
So, 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 okay, so that, that, I'm just, I'm just clarifying because as, as you noted.[1764.35]
We never get an answer.
Okay, so that, I'm asking, is it, or, is it your motion for the reasons set forth tonight? Do you want to specify? I'm not inviting you to, I just want to be sure we're all on the same page, so myself.
No, no, what I want to do is make a, there was a motion to approve. I'm making a motion to deny. If that can't be resolved at 3-2, we might as well adjourn.
We could, we could just say, you know, there, there are several things that I found problematic. Some are more subjective than others. The four-to-one slope thing, I think, is, is pretty objective. We measured it, staff has reported that, that there's a little bit of it is on four-to-one. We could just say deny based on the fact that it overhangs the four-to-one.
That would be entirely fine, but.
I don't know. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to find something that we.
And Chair Hill, I appreciate.
Can we do another?
I'm sorry, hang on. John, you keep telling me that we shouldn't be making any findings.
But we, we need to make findings, Vice Chair.
Why, why? Why are you saying that?
Because we haven't.
But why, well, we, we have found things that are problematical, so.
We find things that are problematic in a lot of things.
Well, we're finding, you know, if, if we, if we're saying we could, that we're.
Chair, let's just take a vote. Take a vote.
Can I make an alter motion?
You sure can.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this project one more time.
Do we not have a, oh, John withdrew his motion?
No, he did it, and, and you seconded it, and I, I want to be sure.
You just go on first.
And so this, this would be a sub.
I think this is for procedures.
Substitute motion.
So he has a substitute motion.
If you get a second, then.
No, hang on, hang on, please, please. Now, Commissioner, are you saying that you would, as staff approved or with the previous modifications, i.e. the sound barrier, I'm going to speak, you know, colloquially, and then the, the full cultural resource monitoring?
I think for the applicant, voting on a motion to approve the project, if you.
I mean, it's easy, you just say.
This is just, this is like strategy.
Right, but you just say with those conditions or ask, ask staff recommend?
Do you guys care about those conditions?
No, we're good with the archaeology condition.
With those conditions.
With those conditions, okay. Do we have a second?
I think, I think you bypassed the vote of these guys first, and then you went to Chair, Chair Commission.
It's a substitute motion, so you vote on that one first, and if it fails, then we go back to the one John proposed. So you don't, you don't have a second, so we go back to the, the main, John's motion. Let's call the question.
What was the motion, please?
Correct, yeah, so.
Denial.
So it was.
For denial.
Hang on. It was, but it was a direction to staff to bring back a, a resolution of denial with, based off of the.
Four-to-one slopes.
Based off of the four.
That's not my motion.
So then, so, hang on, can you, can you?
My motion is a motion of denial. We have not had evidence to make a finding.
And, and, and is there anything specific in the, in the required findings that you can point us to such that when we bring back a resolution of denial, should this pass, it doesn't simply just say, we denied this?
Well, we can't make a finding if we don't know the information.
And, and so is there a specific finding you can point us to?
I, I asked if they wanted to come back and answer the questions of the other attorneys, and he said no. So we're not going to get that information, so my motion is a motion of denial.
Okay, but, and so you're, that.
You don't want to make a finding.
You, you don't have to make a finding, but you.
That's what he's asking for.
Well, but you have to, you, what you do have to say is, if you, if you're not making a finding, you have to say, there is a finding that we cannot make.
Perfect.
So you need to.
Well, Chair.
Okay, so, well, so your motion is you can't make all of the findings?
Yes.
Well, I think, I think you'd probably need to parse that out a little bit, or you're making, going to make staff work really hard.
Yeah.
Pick, pick, pick what you think are the significant things that you can't make, that really, that the whole thing hinges on.
My motion is denial.
But you have to say what you object to.
I don't have to do anything. I can make a motion, I can lose. I made a motion, you seconded it. You can withdraw the, your second if you want, and then they can make a motion for acceptance.
Well, I, I don't understand why you don't want to specify something that you have a problem making the finding on. You've already, you've mentioned a bunch of stuff.
I, I do not want to do it. I, I do not have the information that was requested, and therefore.
That's, that's your finding, that, that's your.
But is there a specific finding that you don't have?
Okay, I'll make a motion with a finding. I make a finding that I do not have the information to be able to vote for this project on any level.
I think you need to specify a few things that you need more information on.
Well, that's my motion. We can vote on it or we can't.
Vote on it.
I, I, we need to give them something to chew on. You can't just.
They got something to chew on. They got an offer.
You're going to second the motion?
They can come back. No, let me ask you this. We vote no, they can come back, right? We're still covering it.
I, I, I'm unsure. What do you mean, they can, they can come back?
It's still in our purview.
But, but, but there, I'm, I'm going to, if, once we have this, this motion, we are going to continue deliberating until that, as I said before, someone abstains, something is done, because.
So you're going to keep us here all night?
I mean, I'm not going to keep you here all night, Vice Chair. I'm going to remind you of the reason that you for all are up here, and that is to make a decision.
Okay, and the reason that we for all are up here is to hear it. It does not have to be concluded tonight. There's been proposals made. They can come back to us if they want, and.
So, so your motion is to continue it, then?
That's automatic.
Based on what?
They got referred to by the planning, the city council. That's why it's here. We didn't have a motion to bring it back. It came here.
It's here. We have to do something with it. We either have to vote one way or the other, or we have to continue it.
Okay, well, I have a motion. You can vote for, for the House if you want. I have a motion of denial.
We need some kind of grounds on that. You can't just say.
That is my motion.
You can't just say.
If you don't want to vote on it.
Let's just slow it down and then we'll start over again.
Okay, you don't have a second on that motion, then?
Oh, you're withdrawing it because you already seconded it.
I seconded a different motion.
You did?
Yeah, when we, I thought we were talking about saying deny based on the four-to-one slope is.
I never said that.
Okay, well.
Okay, so, so I think it's clear that he, that the Chair.
Vice Chair.
That the Chair withdrew his second.
Okay, now they can put their motion.
Or, or, once again, if Chair, if you would like to make a motion, you seem to formulate some.
I'm sorry.
They just gathered, correct?
Dennis, you were, you were making noises that maybe sounded like you were just saying, since it's going to be appealed, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, that you would sign on to a denial, or were you not making that sound?
I'm sitting here waiting for you guys. Just waiting for you guys to. I thought, I thought Vice Chair Mazza made a motion to deny. So you're the one that's saying that he needs a specific? Has our city attorney told us he needs a specific?
So, so, I, and once again, this is not coming from me. The LIP 13.9 says all decisions must be supported by written findings. A resolution of denial that says we deny on everything is, is one that I'm not familiar has ever been done.
Right, well, then, then you're back to, then you're back to.
Craig, you, you are responsible for approving this house. I am voting, I made a motion, you withdraw it. You make a motion. That's the choice you have, okay?
So.
I do not have enough information to make specific findings. Period.
So, Patrick, you said previously, that, I think I maybe heard you say, that it would be a viable motion to say denial based on the discussion, I forget how you phrased it, but the, the points that were raised in the meeting, or something along those lines.
I, I will, I will defer to Director Malika and Planner Eaton if that, if, if we have enough direction based off of that to, to craft a cogent resolution of, of denial that we will, of course, bring back.
What I heard, and, and the Chair can correct me on this, is there was concerns about four-to-one slopes. There was a concern about the character of the neighborhood. And also, there was a concern about impacts on scenic resources, given the proximity to the beach. I think those were kind of the three big ones.
Those were mine. I also heard concerns about biology, Esha Stream. I, I don't know how to parse that exactly, but, and I, I don't know what you need on the table. Patrick, you're helping to figure out what to.
Sure, I mean, just something that we can point to as a, as a reason, any one of those individual items that you just listed would be, in my opinion, more defensible than the previous motion, but I can't make, I don't want to put words into your mouth. So whatever you feel comfortable moving, that is, that is entirely fine.
Or you can hear it again.
A, a motion to continue it. Is that what you're making? Based on what, what more do you need to know about to hear it again?
A continued motion is something.
You guys, hey, we, we need to be careful, it's late. Hang on, I, I know it's late, we need to be careful, we, we need to use our mics, the people are out here, we're, we are recording it, so.
Yeah, John, just turn your mic on and leave it on. Okay, so you're right, we don't have a motion to continue. It's not here. We need to pass something, it seems like, maybe.
Why do we?
Because the default is that we do continue it because I'm looking at the clock, and I'm going to say, I'm going to say, in that case, people have to go home and go to sleep, and so we're continuing it. But these guys don't want to continue it.
The situation is, the guys who want to approve it do not want to change anything. I personally do not want to change my motions, so you decide whether to approve this project.
So we have not voted on a resolution of, or a direction to staff to bring back a resolution of denial. For the, for the record, I think that that should at least be explored and, and voted on before we say we are hopelessly deadlocked. Even though I can see the writing on the wall, we should, you know, take that procedural step, Chair.
Can we say something along the lines, sort of split the baby, I guess? The, the four-to-one slope and other issues of concern in the evenings, sort of more of a, a grab bag that, I don't know.
You had, you had some ideas that you were worried about, use one of them.
And the council's going to be watching this meeting, so they're going to hear everything.
Yeah.
And what did the council do?
Make it easy.
What did the council do? They punted.
Four-to-one slope, that's, that's, we have objective evidence that, to me, says we have construction proposed on Stephen on four-to-one.
And, and if it's four-to-one slope, is that it? You don't care about biology? You don't care about vice?
All of a sudden, you've got a bunch? You realize? All of a sudden, you come back with a bunch, and you're saying denial? Now you're going to tell us you got 10 things to talk about? Come on, Vice Chair, Jesus.
Craig, make your motion, please.
Okay, you're going to approve it.
No, he's not. Why do you say that?
No, a motion to, to deny it. Can I say?
On one term, on one term, he's going to approve it.
And I guess I don't even need to say with respect to all the other stuff because they are going to watch it. Everybody knows what's on the table.
Right, and it'd be a direction to staff to bring back a resolution of denial.
They review it de novo, right? So they can decide whatever they want.
That is correct, but Chair.
So all we're doing, all we're doing is leveraging it to the next body again, so these guys can go home and have some kind of progress.
Not what you're doing, you're taking it to the next body with a.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair, I, I'm going to need to implore you to use your mic. Thank you.
No, they, they, they review it de novo, they can talk about anything and everything they want.
They can, but they could also talk about the only finding that you made.
Well, they're going to watch this, they'll see. Okay, my motion is to deny based on the evidence that some of this construction would be on four-to-one slopes. Do I have a second?
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Based on what you just started making some findings of, of things.
I'm not making findings. There's, there's too many, and too little time, and not enough information.
What information do you need more? We're going in circles here. I think I made a.
Every question we asked tonight that we didn't get answered. How's that? You want to go through them all again?
Would you second my motion, and we can move this on? No? So it's, it's a matter of principle, it's.
Not even that. I'm just, I'm just watching. I'm, I want, you've got two guys, both of you want to deny it, deny it. Take the vote and deny it. And it, why, why, if you're going to deny it, just deny it. Who cares how many findings there are? This thing's going to get thrown back to whoever, and just let it go. Just take the vote.
But we need three votes for that to.
Just, take the vote.